Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Happy fine chilly Monday to all of you. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, October thirteen, twenty twenty five. We have several items up for discussion tonight. The first is our Joint Community Services Advisory Board Meeting. And we have Denise Nicole Franklin and others here in attendance tonight. So come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members. I am Denise Nicole Franklin, and I have the honor of serving as the Vice Chairperson of the Community Service Advisory Board. I call Tillicum Home for the past seven years, and this is my third year serving on the board. Tonight, I'm here to share the two thousand and twenty six Human Service Funding Recommendations and an update on how your investment continues to shape the lives, build stability, and strengthen the city of Lakewood. With me this evening are our Community Service Advisory Board Member Michael Lacade and our Human Service Coordinator Shannon Bennett. Listed on our Community Service Advisory Work Plan and accomplishments that you have in your packets are our members, our council liaison, and staff supports. Our meetings have moved to the third Thursday at five thirty P M. in the American Lake Room. To date, our accomplishments are as follows. In January, we discussed spending strategies for the opioid settlement funds. March, Robert Joyner and James Gillie Lynn with J Quad Planning Group presented about the community service needs assessment for opioid settlement funds. In June, we discussed spending strategies for the opioid settlement funds. July, we participated in a discussion with Isabel King on the work they conducted on the city attorney diversion program. September, we reviewed the two thousand and twenty five Human Service Contract Performance and conducted two thousand and twenty six Human Service Funding deliberations. Prepared for the October thirteenth joint meeting with the city council. Uh, October thirteenth, we are presenting our two thousand and twenty five accomplishments and two thousand and twenty six work plan to council presenting this Human Service Funding Recommendations to council. October twentieth, we'll receive council decision on two thousand and twenty six Human Service Funding Recommendations. November, we'll continue our opioid settlement funds and discussions to include having first responder guest presenters. December, we'll continue our opioid settlement fund discussion to include having the responders' guests present again. Our work plan for two thousand and twenty six is as follows. Releasing the two thousand and twenty seven, two thousand and twenty eight Human Service Application. We'll review the two thousand and twenty five C D B G Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. We'll hold a public hearing on community development and housing services. We'll review the two thousand and twenty six C D B G Annual Action Plan. And lastly, the opioid settlement funds distributions and recommendations. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much, Denise. Any questions on the work plan? I assume you're going to get into the human services funding with Ms. Bennett in a minute, but Mr. Branstadter.
I have no questions. As a liaison to this group, I guess I would want to tell the the councils that they have gone about looking at the use of opioid funds in a very deliberate manner and made a lot of efforts to try to find helpful data. Um, and it's it's and then that has been that has been that has been a challenge of that. So but they have, you know, been talking with a variety of sources to do that. And as you heard, they're 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 really looking to deal with the first responders, both from police and fire, who are probably the public officials that are mostly come direct contact with persons who are being affected by by opioid use and addiction to be able to go and do that. And although it has been some time, we're not behind other jurisdictions in terms of trying to figure out what they're going to do. That the the most common uh decision of jurisdictions in Pierce County is that they're just going to give their money to the county. Because they couldn't figure out exactly how to make it through locally, but I think that we are of a of a size and have some internal wherewithal to be able to come up with some better decisions to include some unique ideas that have been being discussed by this group that hopefully will e- emerge in the in the new year as they come forward with some firm recommendations for up funding in the looking towards what to do in the twenty seven, twenty eight biennium.
Great. Mr. Bokey, wanna provide some perspective?
Yes, I I do. I'm sure Councilmember Branstadter is respectful, but you know, cutting remark towards the county. The I I I would say this, the county had to work on it for a long, long time, too. And the one thing I keep hearing at the county, and I'm not directly involved in this, so let me let me clear my name here. They talked about the mobile opioid van or something. Don't know how it works. Um, I and I think because it is mobile and would come could come into the area that that's maybe something we should look at supporting. Um, if it actually works, right? If there's if there's but but they've it's seemingly at the at the county level, they they have have bet a lot on the mobile opioid thing. The other thing that I I think you should consider on that is, and I don't know if it works at a local level, but really an education piece. Because I think in my lifetime, lifetime of Mr. Branstadter, Mr. Wayland, and and Ms. Moss, you know, I've seen public education things really work well, and I think of smoking, right, is is the big one, right? So um and and how that changed. But, you know, I was in that first generation. I was in elementary school, and they were giving us the it causes cancer kind of thing. And and it and it took a long time. So I wonder if we do things like, hey, if you if you don't see where it came from, don't take the pill, right? Um, if you and and I don't know how that works locally, right? If if we do that, or we're creating more uh opportunities to 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 dispose of drugs, right? Because I've 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 gone on Saturdays where the the barrels are full at the places I go to. I'll go to the police station. Oh, it's full. It's closed. I'll go somewhere else. It's closed. So now I'm wondering, people are actually trying to get rid of their pills, but um they're not always getting emptied and various things. So are there more opportunities in that? So explore a public health option, um, you know, just a a public option that I don't know how you do it locally, but uh with with efficiency. But those are the two things that I would say. Explore the mobile opioid van or whatever they call it. You you decide, no pressure from me. But like I'm saying, they're betting a lot on that at the county level.
Are they doing that themselves? Or they're hiring an agency or funding an agency that has the equipment and the personnel, you know?
You know what? I don't know. I think I think they are hiring somebody.
The county has allocated funding towards it. And I think it's because they're on a different biennium than we are. It's for this coming biennium to do that. But it would be a contracted service, not something that they have any um, anyone in house. And I do not know whether that contract and has a role for the Health Department or whether it's going to be strictly a human services initiative. I I don't think that the that particular uh decision has actually been made in either by in the office of the of the of the executive or through some guidance in the uh approval of the upcoming county budget.
Great. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for those recommendation, and we will consider those at our next meeting.
Great. Well, thank you for the work. We appreciate it. And I think this rolls into the next item. Is that right, Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Review the two thousand and twenty six Human Services Funding Recommendations, which should be on page five, starting on page five.
So with um an overview of our process, every September, our board comes together to take a close look at the data. The story behind the numbers. We reflect, we review contract outcomes, spending levels, in-site visit results from all organizations receiving human service funding. Then we discuss what's working, what needs attention, and where our city support is making the greatest impact. Out of twenty eight programs, twenty two are on track or exceed their two thousand and twenty five goals. Six are tempor- six face temporary challenges, but each one has taken action to recover and refocus before the year ends. I'll share with you a few examples that show both the challenges and resilience within our community partnerships. Community and Schools of Lakewood, they oversee four in-school support programs that directly serve our youth. During the summer months, when school was wasn't in session, their numbers dipped. But as the academic year began, their engagement rebounded, and now they're positioned to exceed their goals. Greater Lakes Mental Health Healthcare, they experienced early staffing shortages leaving the program without can can hold on, my coffee is kicking in. Forgive my uh gap there. Clinicians for about two months. By May, they were fully staffed and have since seen strong progress in client engagement and service delivery. Link West Dental, their community outreach is deeply rooted and connected to schools. When schools reopened, so did access to students and families, helping them regain momentum towards their annual targets. Tacoma Pro Bono Community Lawyers, after utilizing ARPA funds earlier in the year, their liquid programs are now fully operational again and on pace to meet all objectives by December. After reviewing the outcomes and listening to feedback from agency staff, the board agreed these programs are making measurable, meaningful impact. As a result, the Community Service Advisory Board unanimously recommends fully funding all twenty eight programs in two thousand and twenty six. For two thousand and twenty six, the Community Service Advisory Board recommends continuing all the funding levels at the current range from twelve thousand to twenty five thousand dollars. In addition, we're recommending an increase of fourteen thousand dollars to support Lakewood's Promise Youth Programming. These additional funds will help strengthen the youth council and expand opportunities for student leadership and service. For example, one of the areas is addressing transportation and communication barriers that make it hard for youth to participate in city-led events such as the annual youth summit. Our next area of focus is one is ongoing discussions around the use of the opioid settlement funds. This is an opportunity to make generational change, to invest in prevention, recovery, and community wellness. The Community Advisory Board is exploring a multi-pronged approach centered around three key priorities. Supporting recovery through workforce development. We're exploring scholarships that help individuals in recovery become certified counselors through Clover Park Technical College. This gives them the tools to rebuild their lives and help others along the way. Youth Engagement and Prevention. We're in conversation with Clover Park School District and youth-focused organizations about student-led media campaigns that created creatively address substance youth prevention, young people telling their own stories, their own voices to reach their peers, and it can make all the difference. We're collaborating with public safety partners. We plan to meet with the Pierce County Fire Department and Lakewood Police Department to better understand prevention and response priorities, ensuring alignment across sectors. We also anticipate continuing our partnerships with the Washington State Healthcare Authority, which serves as a fiscal agent for the Lakewood Choice Coalition. Their six years of local preventive work make them an essential voice in this process. In the coming months, the Community Service Advisory Board will invite representatives from police, fire, Greater Lakes, Choice, and D S H S to share their perspectives and help shape funding priorities. As for how funds will be distributed, the board is considering two options. Integrating opioid settlement dollars into the existing human service grant process or establishing a separate off-year funding cycle to ensure flexibility and transparency. The goal remains the same, a fair, strategic, and community-centered approach to every dollar invested. In your packet, you'll find the two attachments, the two thousand and twenty six Community Service Advisory Board Recommendations for all agencies, and programming descriptions and numbers of unduplicated Lakewood residents served as of July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five. If approved, all contracts will take effect in January of two thousand and twenty six. As I close, I want to take a moment to thank you for your continued support of Lakewood's human service efforts. Your partnership helps us ensure that every dollar invested reflects hope, accountability, and opportunity to the people we serve. Before I conclude, I have two questions for your consideration. Do you have any questions about our two thousand and twenty six funding recommendations? And what are your thoughts on the best approach for administering the opioid settlement funds? Thank you for your time and your ongoing commitment to building a stronger, healthier, and more resilient Lakewood.
Well, thank you very much. Questions, first of all, and then we should address your questions. Thank you. Any questions on the funding recommendations? I'm still kind of looking on page ten of our packet, which is the outcomes, right? Mid-year performance. You mentioned you talked a little bit about Greater Lakes and Link West Dental, that they're kind of on a path to achieving their goals, their measurable goals for the year. What about, you know, we hear so much about food insecurity, and I see, at least as of the date of this document, nourish was kind of below goal and let's see if in here. Yeah, so are they catching up? Because it seems like with all the food insecurity we hear about, they would be way up on top.
There we go. Um, yes, I'm receiving our third quarter billings right now, which gives us their performance numbers. Um, I did receive nourishes, and they are they have exceeded their fifty percent line, and they're well on their way to seventy five percent.
So in line, it sounds like, with expectations. Okay, good. Any questions, Mr. Branstadter?
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I I just would wanted to make an an observation of it. I support the the recommendations of the council and particularly would note that the Tacoma Pro Bono Award um is uh is something where their performance numbers are are odd because the this 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 is a continuation of a program that we funded with ARPA funds, but the ARPA funds extended into this fiscal year, but not through the year entirely, which is one reason why there was an award from this one percent uh group to be able to go and do that. And I can say anecdotally from having talked with individuals that have received assistance through consulting with the Tacoma Pro Bonors uh here, that there were two things, that they 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 found them helpful. Okay, um, and they found them uh as as someone who that spoke to them in terms that they could understand that they attributed to the fact that they also got listened to, so they they really understood what they that they wanted to wanted to do. And while we are transitioning, this is one of those ARPA-funded programs that the decision to transition and continue to do it is uh something that deals with affordable housing, homelessness prevention, being able to go and do that. So I think that their their numbers to date are a bit of an anomaly, in part because they started the year using funding from one program that don't show up in Ms. Bennett's performance data. Uh, and uh, so 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 they're they're doing better than that. The other comment that I would make is that I do support the the additional fourteen thousand dollars that is available this year because of the calculations of one percent. Going to Lakewood's Promise on a on just a one-year contract that unlike the others wouldn't wouldn't necessarily roll over. But um, I think that the uh it's particularly designed to make the the youth council more effective and impactful. And I think that's important, given the size of the youth council that we've uh accepted the this year to be able to go and 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 do that. And I would think that I I as we go, as we look uh forward into next year, that this is a committee that has or actively sought input from the youth council on a variety of things. And that we might, in a future year, look at uh doing the same thing that we have done for the the Promise Advisory Board is to actually appoint as a voting member, one youth council member to this board in in future years as we as we go forward. Uh, I I think that that would um intensify the 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 involvement, particularly if we were able to appoint someone who has a who's who's perhaps a junior or 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 and had multiple years remaining on the youth council to be able to go and do that. So I would I would suggest that when we get to a point that that is something that we could consider, that that would be uh an enhancement to the work of this board in serving the community. Um, you know, you you look look for for Mr. Bokey to advocate for that in 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 the new year as as a new council forms.
Very good. Any other thoughts on the recommendations? Any questions? Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a thought, I guess, for everyone, you know, when we look at these and and these recommendations and what folks are hitting their goals or not hitting their goals in areas that, you know, there's some some folks that have, you know, hit their goal or already or well beyond, you know, hundreds of percents and stuff. Are are those ones that we should look at, you know, potentially providing more funding towards, like, you know, many of these, we're not hitting their, you know, the requested funding? Would would those be some that it seems like there's certainly more of a need, not more of a need, but they're, you know, they're they have, I guess, a surplus of they need more support, you know, they're actually they're they're actively, you know, kind of having more um or or doing more things that we're seeing more people or, you know, hitting their goal at a higher rate. Would it be worthwhile to move some more funds towards some of those kind of higher um percentage folks?
I I that's a great recommendation. Um, I would also is that taken away from the folks that have those areas, those six challenge areas? Because I would like for the council to keep in mind that um when school's out, it's a challenge to be able to serve school-aged children and family. Um, so that's one of the biggest gaps that we saw. Greater Lakes with them having less clinicians, they've hired and staffed up now, so they're on target. With mental health being a key priority of the city, I would think that we would keep the funding levels where um where the focus is, is making sure people are healthy and strong. Um, and lastly, I would just say the folks that are meeting and exceeding their goals, that's because there's more need in our community. There's more need of food insecurity and housing support. Um, so I would strongly recommend keeping our levels where they are, unless you have a pocket of money that you would like to add from somewhere else. We would love that. We'll take that. But um I wouldn't take away from those folks that serve school-aged children, because when school starts, that's when their care and their support is needed the most.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you. Just for clarification for myself, under the Tacoma Pro Bono, the goal was fourteen, but the zero percent, does that mean that you were not able to contribute to that?
So they were spending down ARPA funding, and so because they had that funding that they needed to spend down, now they can move into their human service funding.
So I I think we haven't necessarily answered your question, though, in terms of use of opioid funds. The question is, should you recommend utilization of those funds in part toward youth education and those kinds of things, kind of like they did the video montage last year that we all enjoyed and and saw?
Yeah.
Um, I certainly would be supportive of that, because I think it it hits home right where we need to hit it, which is education of youth by youth.
Correct.
And that's why it was such a a strong, I think, message venue and format for that. I would be supportive. And the recommendation was about fourteen thousand dollars, is that right?
Yes. Yeah, that that's for this. Well, that's of the human service dollars to um pay for the added support necessary for a very large youth council, um plus Lakewood's Promise um would like to somehow work on a communication plan for our youth summit and marketing. Um, we put these great annual events together, but um I've been hearing in the five years now that the big problem is transportation.
Yep.
Um, so um if we can come up with something that would kind of help with that, we can get more and more youth there.
Yeah, we could probably figure something out. Obviously, resources is important, are important.
Yeah.
Um, but Pierce Transit probably could be contracted to do some additional van shuttling.
Right, right. Um, historically, I I have had a couple of years, the school district has provided us with bus drivers. Um, unfortunately, um, the money went the one year to pay for one child. with bus drivers. Unfortunately, the money went, the one year to pay for one child to ride the bus. So we're looking at other options, but, you know, the more money we can have, we can maybe go to the churches, YMCA, other things, or, like you said, Pierce Transit.
Pick up spot or two or three, and then we could figure that out.
Yeah, equitable locations throughout the city.
Yep. Mr. Brandstetter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I guess that I would just comment that in the element of education to help inform young people and encourage them to avoid getting involved inappropriately with youth to do that, that within Lakewood, the Lakewood's Choice Program actually does a significant amount of that. And that's a program that is not funded with this fund stream, but it's actually funded with state funds that come to the city, then are passed through to Lakewood's Choice to do that, and have been for the last four or five years to be able to go and do that. And it focuses on neighborhoods that by data they've identified as being, you know, places that they have to do that, both through schools and other events to do that. But they are a model that can be looked at to see if expansion throughout the community would be a good investment going forward. And it also would be a thing that we would, should, funding at the state level be reduced for that program, that we would perhaps want to look at having opioid guns, be able to backfill them to be able to go and do that. But, you know, it's difficult to expect one source of funding, which in this case is our human services funding, where we had, where we did other things with ARPA funding and that, to be solving everything by itself. You've got to sort of look at how are things blended and, you know, what things are actually funded, to include things that are funded at the county level, what will serve Lakewood as, make best use of our funds.
Do you have a council member, Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. I too, I'm supportive of the 14 being used for the youth initiatives. I have a ninth grader, so I feel like I can speak to this. And I hear transportation a lot because we are the taxi for a lot of her friends. So I definitely hear transportation as being a definite issue and something that would be, I think, very beneficial. And I just think overall, speaking to the youth, you know, the initiatives on the mental health and supporting those types of things, I hear a lot about that, too. So I think that that's very a wise spend.
Thank you so much.
Does that mean Lucy's going to get a cell phone finally this year?
She did get one.
Just checking. Yeah. Well, great. Anything else on that? Sounds like you've got pretty good support for the recommendations. Certainly, they'll come back to us, but we appreciate the chance to review them with you. And the youth initiatives are going to be great this year. They should do really well.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor and council members.
Appreciate your help very, very much and your service. You know, before we leave, I'll just point out before our federal consultant comes to chat with us about federal policy, as you all well know, federal monies are more challenging, and it makes what you do that much more important because Lakewood is one of those communities that proudly takes 1% of their entire general fund for human services funding. And, you know, we often, here in the community, that there's certainly a lot of need, and we'd love to do more. But Lakewood has done historically a lot with little, and it's because of your work that we're able to leverage those funds to the best programs and provide the best outcomes. So it makes a big difference. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, speaking of folks who have no money for us, Jake, are you going to come up and tell us about federal policy? Can you tell us what we're not going to get, Jake, in the next three years? What's that? Yeah, exactly. You probably could have, it would have been a short conversation. Okay, so next on the list, just for the benefit of our watching public from home, the Mariners won, by the way, so the game is over. You're free to watch us for the rest of the night until 11:00, 11:30. Next, we have review of the federal, state, and Pierce County legislative agenda and policy manuals. And we first have Jake Johnson with the Johnson Group to help us review our federal policy agenda. We start on page 11 of our packet. And Mr. Vargas is here to help guide us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor. Our ongoing federal relations work right now, but mostly standard for questions. We are in a very transitory time right now with the federal affairs. We continue to push our projects forward and push our policies forward at the federal level. We do continue to have success with some of the work that we're doing, but we're also at a place where we don't know entirely how this year is going to go. From a funding standpoint, the government at the federal level is currently shut down. We don't really have a good crystal ball that predicts what the outcome of this is going to look like or what it's going to be. And there's a lot about our 26 agenda that is kind of subject to information yet to come. And I apologize that that's just the time and the tenor of this conversation at this time. Having said that, we have, you know, policy priorities that we intend to continue to build support for next year, and we want to return to requesting earmarked support from the delegation for city priorities next year. Those are really the two primary takeaways in 2026 that we want to be advancing and leading on as we go into the next year. Mayor, I can talk in detail about those, or we can kind of do a round of questions. I'll follow your counsel in terms of, in terms of what's happening right now.
Or not happening. Is anyone answering the phone when you call to the Hill?
Yeah, the Hill, they're about a third staffed right now.
All right. Okay, well, that's good. Something. I think we can walk through, I mean, I've seen the language tweaks. You know, we can see if council members have any particular questions, and there may be some, you know, wordsmithing to be done, but.
May I take a moment and maybe talk about one in detail, which is the one that I think we're moving the quickest on? So the city of Lakewood, in partnership with maybe two or three other cities, has really been leading an effort for the past, boy, five, six, seven years now in the state. And we call it the terribly named medium-sized city set aside. But really what it is, it's a chance to make sure that medium and smaller-sized cities have a larger competitive access to federal discretionary grant programs. And, I mean, the quick statistic is that prior to 2021, no medium-sized city in the state of Washington had ever won a RACE grant, or now it's known as a BUILD grant. And these are really the primary kind of multi-tens-of-million-dollar grants to do large-scale infrastructure projects. And so the last time, thanks to Lakewood's work and leadership, we were able to get language that changed that program so that half of all awards in that program went to communities below 200,000 in population size. And so since 2021, there's been eight communities in Washington State between 10 and 100,000 in population size that have received RACE grant awards, including a planning grant for the city of Lakewood. So what's next? Well, this program is up for reauthorization in next year, '26. So we've already been working in '25 to build a coalition of cities in Washington State. We had 36 cities sign on to a letter earlier this year, led by Lakewood and Bothell and Shoreline, that went to the delegation requesting that not just the RACE grant program, but all discretionary grant programs in, under the US Department of Transportation and the Department of Housing and Urban Development, have a medium-sized city set aside, established within them. We also asked for other policy initiatives connected to that as well, including that any obligation deadlines for federal funds are automatically extended if they are the cause of federal delays in review, which is what's happening right now. We have a couple of cities in the state that are having a hard time meeting their obligation deadlines because they can't get the federal government to act quick enough for those obligation deadlines to, you know, for environmental reviews or other permitting issues to come through and take place. So again, it's progress. We have the unanimous support of our delegation at this point, including on a bipartisan and bicameral basis, to move this initiative forward. And we have the ranking member of the House Transportation Committee in both the House and the Senate on our team. So we feel like, I realize it's incremental progress, Mayor, and that's frustrating at the federal level, but it sure feels, it really honestly truly feels like progress. And I think we're going to get more tools to use the next time we authorize this bill.
Any of your folks chat much about the impact of the Turner, is it Turner litigation? Is it the HUD and FAA funding and?
Everybody's watching it acutely, and there, I'm not even sure. I know that the county has stopped admitting new members of the class or the suit, forgiving, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know what the precise term is. But there are cities that are impacted by that decision that are not even a part of that suit at this point. So it's a massive issue, and we're watching it very closely. It's going to dramatically impact.
Right. Mr. Brandstetter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, in terms of Washington City's enthusiasm for getting the medium-sized cities a guaranteed percentage of things to do that, is that enthusiasm evidenced in other states, or are we really doing most of the pushing of that ball up the hill?
We are doing the majority of the pushing of that ball up the hill, but we're making progress. And again, I'm sorry that I don't have more conclusive things to share with you. But there are many cities in the state that over the last five years have worked to get on to, like, the National Policy Committee at the National League of Cities, specifically to take this issue with them. So Shoreline sits on that committee right now, specifically to advance this issue to an NLC standpoint. And we're trying to do this with the Association of Transportation Professionals, the contractors, kind of a lot of non-traditional allies that might want to see more of these projects funded. So the answer is yes, but we don't have, to be blunt, we lack the infrastructure without an NLC to really go out and build this type of coalition state by state. We are doing this, you know, usually with city staff and contract lobbyists. It's not a, it's not a well-oiled machine.
Very good. And any other questions, Mr. Johnson? Challenging times.
It's a challenging time with an unknown outcome right now. But one thing that is true as of this moment is that Congress is still providing earmarked funding for cities on a bipartisan basis. That process remains under some pretty tight constraints, but Congress, you know, continues to put those projects forward. The House and the Senate have passed three of their 12 appropriations bills, not into law yet, but they've passed them through both chambers. And those each have earmarked projects contained within them for the entities that are eligible to receive them on a bipartisan basis. So from that standpoint, you know, we're not knowing the outcome of the FY26 budget at this point, but we are assuming that this is a funding opportunity that is available to us next year, and that we intend to put a project forward.
Just remind us, I know we've seen the H-Barn silos, and we could talk about that when we get to the county piece in a minute, but are we doing the same on the federal side? Is that our earmark that we're looking at?
Essentially, we have placeholder language, if you will, in the packet here, something related to the, perhaps related to the H-Barn and/or community center in 2026, right? It's just very fluid discussion right now. So we wanted to put a placeholder there. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't see we committed any one thing, which is good.
I want to be clear, too, for the, for council's benefit, that there are very strict eligibility requirements around how these monies can be spent. So we want to look for the elements of projects that are uniquely qualified for funding within those accounts. So to be, to be very blunt, Parks funding is not, the federal earmarking process is not a source of municipal park funding. But community centers are, and there's, you know, water projects are, utility projects are. There's things that we can do that are connected to, you know, multi-use civic facility.
Right. We're going to be chatting about that sooner than later. So that'll be good. Mr. Brandstetter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and it's fine, and I understand that, although I remember that in the early phases of where there was defense compatibility funding, and we thought it was all going to go to infrastructure, and some of it went to swimming pools and community centers and things around the country and not to a lot of infrastructure. Is that, is that program then somewhat adjusted now to be more of infrastructure-focused, or is that a program that if you went to, such as a a community center in proximity to a military base, is that have some legs, or do you feel that they've sort of gotten the message that infrastructure is what that's supposed to be?
It's a great question. The story of that program is amazing, because it was born here, right? It was born out of the city of Lakewood. The whole idea for this, and for those members who don't know, the nickel version is, prior to the city of Lakewood pushing for this policy change, the Department of Defense was precluded on spending money on projects, whether they be human or physical infrastructure, that existed outside the wire of the base configuration. So even though we were trying to move people onto and off of base in an urbanized military installation, we were unable to get support for those infrastructure dollars that needed to be used to enable that to happen. So we created a program within the Department of Defense and created some initial funding for that, which as of the most recent fiscal year, council member, I'll answer your question directly now, it is now funded at its fully authorized level of $100 million a year. And they have channelized it into three separate categories, one of which is, in fact, hard physical infrastructure.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one other point about what we're doing here, is in the policy manual, in the introduction, and in the policies priorities, in the first priority, that there is repeated reference to a community center in H-Barn construction project. And it's really my belief and my interpretation of our previous discussions that those are two separate projects, not a single project. And I wouldn't want to have this worded as a single project, because when we get one done, we're going to then want some money for the other. And there's a $3.5 million number in here, but that sounds to me like an H-Barn number. Okay, where we are, and that we should not be implying that that is both the community center in H-Barn, because in our discussions, my belief is that the two projects are separate. One is located in the downtown, one is located in the parks, that the H-Barn becoming a venue-focused project diminishes its ability to be an ongoing day-to-day community center, be able to go and do that. And I wouldn't want to get into a appearance of a bait and switch ask, where we ask for $3.5 million for a community center, an H-Barn project, and then get one and then come back and ask for another amount in a future year for a community center project that is going on. So I would, if what we're talking about in our introduction and here is the H-Barn project, that I would take the community centerpiece out of the narrative, because I don't think it's a single project. Alternatively, you could rephrase it so that it reads like it's two separate projects, a community center project and an H-Barn restoration project. But the way that it's worded, and I recognize that during much of their fundraising, Partners for Parks promoted it as a combination. Okay, but, you know, I really think that we, as a council, are trying to consider out how to move forward with the H-Barn project, and with our priority being to get a community center and with our priority being to get a community center, most likely in the downtown, that we're not looking at them as a single project. And that's how it's worded in both the introduction and in the first policy priority. And I think, you know, there could be an edict, because if we really want to talk about the H Barn, that's fine. On the other hand, you know, again, it sort of indicates that the real ask is going to come another year down the road, but but it may be two asks.
Maybe two questions on that. One to Mr. Vargas and maybe to Jake about whether or not to qualify for federal funding, given what you indicated about quote-unquote park projects, whether we need to just have some language, because I think the intent is not to have an event center. I don't think we've ever had discussion of recognizing the H Barn as simply a historical restoration slash event center. I think it is, in my opinion, a community center in part because it's going to be multi-use for ages and stages and potential to seniors to have a center that doesn't exist currently. I mean, this is the one that's most timely on the docket, so to speak, to get some traction to completion. So I don't, I don't see it, in my opinion, by opening up to you folks on how you might want to tweak that language, if at all. I don't see it as just a historic renovation slash event center. Because if that were the case, Rotary would never have given the 50 grand that they gave. They don't want an event center. They want a community center in part. I know many of the donors have put $2.7 million toward that, including my wife and I put a little bit, nothing near that, of course. It wasn't to have an event center. It was to have a community type center that had more daily use than just an event location, but that's again me. So a good, good comment, good point. Throw it out for discussion and then feedback from Jake and Michael.
I think from my standpoint, we, this is a placeholder right now, kind of on the calendar for what we're looking at for next year. I don't think I have any objections whatsoever to making it more potential, you know, what the projects could be. What we have to do on our side still is still work with staff, work with Partners for Parks, work with Parks Department, work with Michael, work with the city manager, and figure out kind of what exactly the project scope is, what exactly the eligibility requirements are on the funding accounts, and then where is the marriage between those two things, right? We, and I'm not prepared to, you know, tell you tonight, kind of the intimate details of what the funding request specifically will be for that, you know. But this seems to be, this area of the city seems to be, or this project area of the city seems to be the one that is syncing with the timeline for the next federal funding request, both with need, with the available amounts and with the timing. So we, you know, the work on our side is to hone in, what is the specifics of that request? Is it a construction request? Is it renovation?
We certainly don't want to be mutually exclusive to a downtown multi-generational center that we've talked about putting together.
So I think, I think we can, we can, we could expand the definition to make, to reflect kind of where we're truly at with this at this point. But from a timeline standpoint, we're trying to hone in on what that project looks like before the end of this calendar year. That sets us up for success going into next year to compete in this federal funding process.
Mr. Vargas, any feedback?
Yeah, to that point about language, perhaps to be more transparent and hone in on the point that it is a placeholder, perhaps putting that this is a made, we're seeking federal funding for a major capital facilities project, perhaps putting quotations, community center in the 2026 era. Perhaps that is a good placeholder. And as you know, the discussions bear out and city staff with Partners for Parks and, you know, recommendation to the city council, we'll start honing in on a one pager and have the finite details about what that looks like. But for now, major capital project, capital facilities project in 2026.
That will serve the community. How about that?
Your Honor, if I may, I'm learning the protocol here on when that, when we were talking about this, you know, well, as previously I've mentioned that we'll come back with the study session with Partners for Parks and discuss different items on it. Obviously, we have the policy manual coming beforehand and in looking at some of these other potential projects, they're not ripe for that this year's legislative session. This one is there, talked about the number to put in. I said, really, it's going to be that three, three and a half million dollars is going to make the difference to where it really climbs over if we want to go forward with that. So that's where that number came from in here. In terms of nomenclature related to a community center, it's not intended to replace anything within the future. But even through our discussion and the, really the utility, a lot of it, just at the last work session, was talking about maximizing the use of it, the utility of it. Easily change it from community center to multi-use facility that hones in on still some of the same things I think they would look for in terms of appropriations on meeting that community need and still creating a little, enough of a separation. Again, there'll be more to come on the discussion when we have that joint study session with Partners for Parks. But that was kind of the idea behind of getting something in this legislative session upfront, knowing that we're probably back there for the expansion of Council goal platform, you know, in future years. But really, if we wanted to see something immediate, it's probably going to have to be a pretty big number to get us to that tipping point to where then we'd be able to leverage potential LTAC funds off into the future for that project.
There is some appeal to it from someone like our Congresswoman's perspective where they may be the last dollars in because the community has raised X, the city's willing to do Y, the feds put in Z, right? And that's why it makes an attractive ask. So, any else on that?
One last note. Projects funded in this account are, this is the one that Congress really likes to fund the, the account. And if you look at all the projects for the state of Washington that are in the appropriations bills for this fiscal year, I would say, I can't give you a hard number on this, but probably a third of all the projects are this type of project, community enhancement project, whether they're community centers or senior centers or emergency service, you know, locations, shelters, things like that. This really is a priority of our delegation right now on a bipartisan basis.
Absolutely.
So we're also, we're trying to follow where the compass is pointing us to, you know, in terms of what are the, what are good projects that we can bring to the delegation that they want to partner with us?
The public-private piece of it has got some significant appeal as well. So, good. Any else on the federal side? I mean, there's not much going on on the federal side, Jake, but whatever you want to bring to us, you can pretend. Sure, Mr. Boki, do you have something on the federal side?
No, I, I don't, because there's, in my world, I feel like there's more heat than light, right? We're hearing, oh, there's no money coming in, but yet on the other hand, when you look at the budget, federal dollars are still coming in at the same pace that they did last year. So then it, because they keep going to court. So when we look forward, I mean, because I saw this rescission package and it hit various things, including PBS really hard. What, what, what things? When you're talking about, you know, Congress has a way of kind of continuing the status quo. They, they tend to be guardians of the status quo because that's what they're comfortable with. But what things do you really think from an expenditure standpoint are now likely to go by the boards? I mean, things that will either be drastically reduced or eliminated outside of the things that we've heard about with foreign aid and that kind of things, but things that would actually impact folks here, and you know, our citizenry real well, folks here in Lakewood, not necessarily the city government, but the actual individuals.
Yeah, that's such an easy question to answer. We're, I will answer your question directly, but there's a little bit of characterization that I want to do for it first. We are, I mean, it's too sophomoric to say we're in unprecedented times, right? But what we are in right now is a, is a tension between the executive and the legislative branches in terms of who gets to, who gets to administer the funds, right? And that is, that is a process where both of those institutions of government are trying to figure out where that line is. The executive branch is moving that as aggressively as anybody ever has to the executive branch. And so they are trying to unilaterally rescind grants that have been awarded by Congress. They are trying to make decisions that they may or may not have the legal authority to make. And the outcome of all of those is in judicial review right now. So we don't know what's happening. Behind the scenes, we haven't seen the Trump administration and the Republican Congress in this cycle enact a budget yet. So we're still dealing with the Biden budget from last year and we, we passed a CR last year, which means we're actually working on FY24, you know, funding right now. So we don't know, right? We don't know, like, what is the hit in terms of the day-to-day impact of the big scale budgetary decisions that are out there right now? Now, having said that, what's going to happen, I think in the short term, most quickly, is some of the actual helping people money that's available, because it's either impounded by the courts right now, while the, while the Trump administration tries to rescind some of those funds. I am deeply concerned about Medicaid cuts and the impact on the state of Washington's budget as a result of what they may or choose to do or not choose to do to backfill the, you know, the hundreds of millions of dollars in Medicaid cuts that we're going to be seeing. And with that is also the SNAP benefits. I think that the first things you're going to see in the state of Washington are people's access to a subsidized health insurance marketplace and funding available through the SNAP program for kids and families. That's, that's what you're going to see starting in January. The rest of these impacts will be downstream from that.
Good. Thank you. Yeah, sure. Any, oh, any questions over there? No? Any crystal ball gazing on the impacts on the federal layoffs, potential firings here? Because we're fairly government-centric state in many ways.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of hard to draw the line sometimes between facts and opinions. What we know is that a lot of the regional agency offices, so Region 10 of HHS, for example, Region 10 of USDOT, we've seen layoffs in those departments that have already gone into effect. Those are under the purview of the executive branch who has control over those staffing issues. But right now, it's been really hard to get some of the traditional support that we've seen from those, those government entities, because there, there's just nobody there picking up the phone anymore, right? So at the same time, you've got this weaponization of some of the grant funding that's gone out and the rescinding of those grant funds, but there's nobody at the regional office to call and try to adjudicate the problem inside the shop. This is all being played out in real time. I mean, I don't know what the appropriate analogy is to use right now, but like, I mean, we're, we're in the middle of it, right? And we don't know kind of how it's going to play out.
Exactly.
Um, I would say that I would look to this, I think, I think the impact is going to fall on the state the hardest because the state is going to have to pick up a lot of the capacity. Washed off is going to have to pick up a lot of the roles that USDOT traditionally had, for better or for worse. And you're going to see that, I think, in different agencies kind of going through. In Lakewood specifically, the federal government shutdown does put an embargo on the payment of of salaries, including for enlisted personnel. And so when we start missing papers, now, now these, I want to be really clear. Congress has recognized this threat in the past and has created statutory protections for these funds so that these will be backfilled at some point, but not every family can afford to go multiple cycles missing paychecks, you know, without there being some, even, even with the promise of those funds coming back. So I think that getting through the shutdown is going to have, I think, a real impact just in, in the, in the week-to-week moments until we're through it. And even if there's protection for those dollars for those people at the end of the time.
Very good.
I don't think I answered your question, but I did my best.
Can, yeah, exactly. But there's nothing else on the federal side. I just want to personally thank you, Jake, for all your assistance with us and certainly your education of me over the years. This may be the last meeting we have together.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
But certainly enjoyed our trip to DC and again, learned a lot about the process through you. So thank you for all you've done for the city and will continue to do. So appreciate that. Okay, well, we've got Shelley here, so we go from
Great. Well, just remember the opposite of Congress.
Exactly, yeah.
Progress.
Ms. Holder is here to talk to us about an entity that still has some funding in the state of Washington and our state delegation. Welcome.
Thank you. Got to get set up here. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. It's good to be with you. So before we jump into covering the materials in your packet, I wanted to just provide a high-level overview of what we expect out of the 2026 session to set the context for tonight's discussion on your state legislative priorities. So the 2026 session is the second year of the legislative biennium. It's a short 60 days and the primary objective is to adopt the supplemental operating capital and transportation budgets. The state, state's operating budget is facing a shortfall, given the most recent revenue forecast, roughly $900 million short over the next four years. And so that's something the legislature is going to have to consider balancing as they adopt their supplemental budget. And I will note, since Jake was just here, that does not take into account any of the backfill that may be needed for, for federal programs.
What was that number again? How much?
So it's roughly $400 million in the current budget and then $500 million in the two-year. And because the state has to balance over four years, it's, the number you'll hear tossed around is 900 million. Yeah. The capital budget is the most stable of the three state budgets because it's funded through the sale of bonds. The, there is roughly $349 million in bonding capacity for a supplemental budget. And to put that in perspective, the current biennial capital budget is $7 billion. So the supplemental is expected to be relatively, or very small. Bonding is not the only source of funding for the capital budget, but it is the primary one. And then the final budget is the transportation and surprisingly, transportation revenues are steady. We've seen a significant decline in transportation revenues over the years and that amount is holding steady. It's actually up very slightly in the current budget. Not enough to fund anything new, but we're not going to have to look at cuts, which is excellent. In addition to adopting the supplemental budget, the legislature will consider thousands of policy bills. Any bill introduced in 2025 that was not passed is automatically reintroduced and legislators can introduce as many new bills as they would like. Democrats will continue to hold the majorities in both the House and the Senate and we don't expect to see significant changes in committee leadership or caucus leadership since this really is the second half of the biennium, things mostly hold steady. We will see nine state legislative races on the November ballot. Really only one of them is competitive. That's the Senate race in the 26th Legislative District. If the Democrat in that race holds the seat, Democrats will maintain a supermajority. If not, they'll still have a majority. Following the 2026 legislative session, the entire House and half of the Senate will be up for reelection. For that reason, and because 60 days is very short, we typically don't see really controversial bills passed in a short session. So that's the context of 2026. Now we're going to walk through the city's draft legislative agenda. We're going to be on page 25 of your packet if you're looking at it online. As a reminder, the legislative agenda lists your top few priorities that you want to see advanced. And in a short session, when you're considering priorities, it's good to think about what's something that's really imminent that has a time-sensitive need and/or what are things that we're wanting to tee ourselves up for to continue in the next budget cycle. As we have done historically, there is a fact sheet or one pager that accompanies each of the draft priorities. So the first priority is a request for the state to pass legislation that would codify the community partnership program at Western State and Eastern State hospitals. And as you all know, every two years, the city asks the state to fund this program at Western State. And it has been funded every year since two thousand and seven. Because of the success of the program here in Lakewood, the city of Medical Lake, um, also created a program in partnership with Eastern State Hospital. And both of those programs were funded in the most recent operating budget. Uh, Senator Jeff Holy is the senator that represents the city of Medical Lake. And he introduced Senate Bill fifty two eighty six in the 2025 session. That bill does exactly what we we, um, have previously asked, which is it codifies the program. Um, it doesn't set the funding levels in statute. It says that the jurisdictions would need to work with the hospitals to determine the level of need. Last session, that bill passed out of the Senate unanimously and was referred to the House Appropriations Committee and it did not have a chance for a public hearing. We ran a bill very similar to this, we meaning the city of Lakewood, in two thousand and seventeen. And, uh, we faced really strong resistance in the House. So we weren't too surprised to see that it didn't get a hearing, uh, this past session. The the House has and still does have a resistance to putting programs in statute that obligate them to, um, ongoing expenditures. So that's going to be a hurdle for this bill, um, in the House in particular. The proposed priority for the city for 2026 is to advance, um, fifty two eighty six, take advantage of the progress that it's made so far in getting out of one chamber. Um, and to to try to push it across the finish line. One of the things that makes, uh, this effort different than our effort in 2017 is we now have the city of Medical Lake joining efforts with us and with the city comes their legislative delegation as well. Um, the draft one pager that your is in your pocket, it has, um, just data, for example, for Eastern State Hospital. It's it's completely made up. Um, it's data that we would incorporate from the city of Medical Lake, um, that we have not gathered yet from them. So I just wanted to point that out in case, uh, there were any questions there. Um, I think, I don't know how, um, we want to handle it. I can move on to the next priority and handle questions at the end or take questions on this priority before we move on.
Why don't we go ahead and go priority by priority?
Mr. Bo.
I do want to stop there and talk about the and you had a question.
So just the other day, uh, a guard, a security guard got killed at Eastern State.
Right.
So I I and I don't know the circumstances behind it, but I just saw the headline and it was commented by somebody I work with. So how how does that impact? Does that help us in this argument or does the legislature care? Or is it, without knowing the circumstances be behind this, clearly there's a problem, right? I mean,
I I think it, um, it could help. It could also not. Um, the circumstances, the circumstances of that incident, I don't think would have been prevented had the community partnership program existed or and it does exist. So, um, if that wasn't, if there was a pattern, I think that there would be a case to say this is a dire need. Um, because it was a one off incident, I'm skeptical that it could, uh, help our case, just because I I don't like to catastrophize. And so I think I would, I I would have a hard time going in saying, you know, we had this one off incident and now we have to put this in statute or else. Um, that doesn't feel genuine, in my opinion.
With respect to data and looking ahead four years, when the population on the Western State campus is going to change significantly from what it is now and that there'll be a new facility that will have more enhanced in-house security, both physical and 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 procedural, being able to go and do that. What kind of data do we need to be able to then at that juncture justify a continuation of the program? Is it will need to exist with that new new Western State environment? And is there a place to go to get that data where there are uh, other locations, maybe not even in Washington State, but where there are forensic hospitals and understanding what kind of, uh, uh, impact they have on local communities and local law enforcement involvement? Um, you know, I I again, that that's kind of in a if we get to twenty thirty, asking with the same rationale that we have now, when when there is a completely different type of facility there, we may need more or less or or, uh, going off, but trying to look somewhere where there is that type of the facility and talking with whatever local jurisdictions are around it to try to be able to see where we're at would would might be a a good idea. Whereas Medical Lake isn't going to go through that change. Um, so, um, Medical Lake data may not be exactly what we need in the near future.
Yeah, that's a that's an excellent point. Um, I think that's definitely something we can look into. I know that the model of state hospitals is not, um, prominent around the country right now. And so we may have a hard time finding an example of a state hospital that's focused exclusively on forensic patients. But I think you bring up a good point and it's worth us looking into to have that data at the ready. Um, the last several years, we have not tried this, bringing this legislation forward for for that very reason, recognizing that the population at Western State would be changing. And so the the security needs may be changing as well. Um, I think on the one pager, we reflect the cases that have been referred to the Lakewood Police Department for investigation. And I'd I'd have to, uh, confirm with the police department. But my hunch is that the number of cases referred will continue. Um, if not at similar levels, then then perhaps, uh, even heightened levels. But that the calls for service may not be as high. That's that's my very layman's understanding of the program and the the change in the population. But I think Councilwoman Branson, you raise a great point and we can definitely look into that.
Very good.
Okay, so then the next, um, proposed priority is a capital budget request for two hundred thousand dollars to support the preservation preservation of the H barn silos. Um, the total project cost for this is two hundred and fifty thousand. So the city would be contributing the remaining fifty thousand that would be needed. Typically, in supplemental budgets, the average, uh, capital budget award is two hundred thousand. So we're right on target in terms of the amount. It's a competitive size to be requesting. Um, and I understand that the city is in the process of refining the details of the H barn, uh, plan. And that, uh, this would kind of be a precursor to whatever else comes at the H barn. So we would want to make that very clear in this request that it is, um, separate and distinct from the barn itself.
Don't mean to laugh, but I I did see the focus on the silos and I thought creative, but can we get there? And where do we pull that number out of a hat? Was there some method to the madness on the silo restoration?
Sure. So we do have the cost estimates for the entire project, right? That was presented, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, and a part of that, some line items were specifically about the silos. So that's what we pulled and they do total, you know, um, around the two hundred thousand dollar mark to include, you know, seismic retrofit, upgrade to building codes, et cetera, et cetera. So we do have line items of that.
So we got some support for it.
Exactly. Um, it is a very discreet portion of the entire project, which we know the actual sticker price of that we could complete in twenty twenty six, um, since, you know. Yeah.
Special cage for the barn owl, perhaps. It's part of the restoration. Second, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think that's a great kind of way to get started on it because um, we don't know the rest of the project and how it's going to turn out. But I think that one thing that's been consistent from everyone has been trying to maintain the silos. And so we can start there and maybe the rest of the barn, you know, isn't a full historical preservation or it's some kind of mix match approach to it, depending on, you know, funding and and what the um, the overall plan ends up being. Um, I think that that's a great place to start and I I think is a a cheaper, easy way to kind of show progress and and, um, start moving something forward. So I I appreciate that.
Yeah, it was very creative.
Mr. Vargas gets the credit for that.
Yeah. That's good.
Okay, the next proposed priority is something that the Association of Washington Cities has also identified as a top priority for 2026, and that's increased funding for public defense. Uh, the Washington State Bar Association established lower caseload standards for public defenders. And the Supreme Court has upheld those standards, um, but is allowing a ten year implementation period. So by twenty thirty six, when the city has to fully comply with the new standards, there will be a two million dollar funding gap, uh, for the city's indigenous defense costs. So the this priority would ask the state to not only increase the funding, uh, to provide to cities and counties, but also to make strategic investments in the public defender's workforce. Um, since there's not enough public defenders to, um, achieve the new caseload standards. Considering the budgetary challenges that the legislature is facing and that there is a ten year, um, implementation window, I expect this is going to be a multi-year effort that we'll begin making progress on in twenty twenty six.
Is this what AWC is pursuing as well?
Yes.
Okay. Do you, would you foresee? I could just hear members of the delegation asking us, well, what are you doing for yourself? As in the one tenth, one percent for criminal justice funding? Right?
Yes, I think that is a very fair question.
Okay, any questions? And we've already been briefed on that. Mr. Vargas did a good job on that, uh, a month or so ago, about a month ago on the study session. So we know that that's something we're going to revisit probably early next year. But that's a question that they're going to ask.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, great.
Okay, and then the final priority is, um, slightly different than what you see in your council packet. And it was sent out as an updated version, so you, uh, should have copies of that. Um, we're, so in recent years, the legislature has been passing, um, statewide land use and zoning policies. And while cities have opposed many of those, uh, due to philosophical differences, there's also a cost for cities to update their code with each new state law that passes. The legislate, the legislature has provided some funding, um, on a formula basis to help cities with, um, updates to their comprehensive plans. But in twenty twenty five, the legislature passed a bill, um, that establishes new parking standards. And it, uh, for the city of Lakewood, it has to be implemented within eighteen months of passage, which means it has to be implemented by January of twenty twenty seven. That does not align with the city's comp plan, um, update. And so there's, um, costs outside of what the state has already provided. Um, the other potential cost to the city is there is an option in implementing the bill to, um, to con to conduct a study that would demonstrate that compliance with the statewide standards um, would result in significant safety concerns. And so if, um, if the city chose to take advantage of the option to do that study, that would be a cost as well. The priority for consideration is, um, requesting the state to create a grant program to provide cities with funds to offset the costs associated with implementing the new parking standards. Um, and I'll just say that I did start this off by saying there is a bleak budget outlook. And this would be something that we would be looking to be have funded out of the state's operating budget. Um, so it it would be a very heavy lift going into a supplemental year. Um, there's also, um, ongoing tension between the state and local governments around land use. Um, that being said, this is a priority that was recommended and is being brought forward for your consideration.
Again, you know, open it up. Is this something AWC is pushing?
Um, this is not a priority for AWC.
Okay. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not really on our legislative agenda, just kind of more of a general question about that one. The limitations on minimum parking requirements, and I I don't think that we've really gotten down to the, you know, establishing super low minimums for parking here. Is it setting a threshold on like maximum, like you can't have more than a certain amount of parking stalls per unit? Or is it just saying that you can have, you know, a a limitation on your minimums can go down further or something? What's the?
Great question. The the bill, what does it say? You can't require any more than half a parking stall per single family unit. And I think one parking stall per two spaces, uh, for a thousand square feet for commercial.
Okay, so it's saying, oh, so it's sort of just putting the limitation on the top. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Questions on Mr. Branson?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you for the the edit. It reads much better than what was in the on the screen. So I'm going to go to do that. Uh, I just had two questions about it. And one is, if we move forward with doing this, that it would seem logical that we would probably look to and get some funding to engage a consultant to do these studies because it's an area of doing all that. And that didn't appear to me to be in the examples of costs um, to, uh, to do that. And I would wondering if there is a way to, uh, to 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 add and and the fact that we're definitely going to have areas that need that needed that will require a study. And so, uh, that should be an anticipated bullet, uh, cost there to be able to go and do that.
Yeah, we can definitely incorporate that.
And, um, and 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 on the page, the very last word, it says the state parking laws. And, um, it rather than saying we need money to 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 comply with the law, could the word mandates be used there to 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 sort of saying, you know, there's not much that much no, there's no flexibility here.
Of course. Yeah, we can make that update.
Good catch on that. Any other thoughts or comments on that? That's going to be kind of like the Toronto Blue Jays in tonight's game. Opportunity to get that one knocked out of the park might be a little challenging. But it's worth doing.
Okay. Well, thank you for the feedback on the priorities. Um, we are going to transition now to look at the policy manual. And as a reminder, this document is intended to be a reference for city staff and uh, myself to know the city's position on a variety of issues that may or may not come up during a legislative session. Um, for the sake of time, I'm going to review only the substantive changes to the document. And, um, I may need to phone a friend at times. I'm going to start on page thirty
Thirty five.
Five of the packet. Yep. Um, the first proposed edit is, um, updating the language for the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners to reflect their, um, uh, legislative priorities for 2026. Next, on page thirty seven, um, there's a a new section on unit lot subdivisions. This is, um, a bill that was passed in twenty twenty five. Um, establishes new requirements for the subdivision process. And this is a basically a request for technical updates to help comply with that new law.
Mr. Branson?
Okay, I, um, I just wrote
Okay, I um I just wrote a note in the margin on when I when I read this in that it talks about uh uh talks about how lots would be tracked, meaning how the assessor or 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 somebody would who owns what and and going to do that. Um, that uh it seems to me that um uh not mentioned in the statement, but it's not just tracked, but taxed. You know, you know, you know, and you know, you know, with respect to property taxes, how how that would be done is 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 it felt that the using the terminology, how they would be tracked meant to imply that that would figure out how that how how their the individual lots would be taxed?
Um, my understanding of the intent of the language is to make sure that based on how a lot is subdivided, limits how it can be divided into the future. So if as there needs to be some type of way to know how was this lot divided to know what options are available in the future. So that the tracking isn't necessarily for taxation purposes, but for um legality.
Okay, so is it this this maybe that may yeah, I guess it's really kind of up to the county assessor to decide if this is creating him a problem in trying to fi- figure out taxes. Okay, thank you.
The next item is uh um enhancing the city's statement in support of tax increment financing. We do anticipate there to be a bill brought forward this session that the Association of Washington Cities is working on currently. Um, so that's um augmenting the city's uh statement on that economic development tool. The next edit is on page thirty-nine under transit oriented development. And this is just um accounting for the fact that legislation has passed. That places mandates on cities when as it comes to uh zoning for T O D. On page forty, we have removed the reference to the Edgewater Park Improvement Project since we secured funding for that. And the project, as I understand it, is funded. We's awful, we have also removed the reference to historic Fort Stillicum. It's uh no longer one of the city's uh priorities. Added in language about the H Barn renovation at Fort Stillicum Park. Um, well, I guess updated the language um to include the reference to the um capital budget request for the silos. Updated the language regarding the Recreation and Conservation Office funding to account for the funds that have already been secured in the first half of the biennium. On page forty-three, um in your packet, you will see a reference to the um Senate Bill fifty-one eighty-four and the parking reform. Um, I I am going to recommend that we update that language to reflect the the new language that you see on your legislative agenda and the one pager to focus more on funding for implementation of that law. And that we move this to the finance section since it is about fiscal impact to cities and less so about transportation. Um, we've removed the reference to the Clover Creek Flood Plane to reflect council's previous conversations on that topic. On page forty-five, under the I five South Sound Corridor Improvements, um you'll see a lot of verbiage that's been struck. And that is for, we've essentially consolidated um to make it really uh easier to read what the city's position is on a variety of um projects along I five. And um added one of those, which was the I five um Nisqually River Delta that has been incorporated into the um South Sound Military and Communities Partnership's priorities at the end of the packet. Moving on to page forty-seven, we've removed removed the reference to limiting additional freight on the Point Defiance Bypass. That's um an issue that we have not seen come up for many years. I think it's a leftover from um years ago when that was an ongoing discussion. Um, we have um updated the language about the future commercial airfield site. And I do want to mention because there's been some recent uh media about um the state's efforts on finding a new location for a future airport. Um, in coordination with the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, we are engaging with the working group that's been tasked by the legislature to identify sites. Um, within the authorizing legislation, that working group is tasked with identifying sites that are not keep are not um that need to be removed from consideration because they are in conflict with conflict with military operations. Um, so the working group is in the process of identifying what those locations are. And um S S M C P is coordinating to have a briefing by J B L M done to that working group um moving forward. The next edit is on page forty-eight. Um, it's incorporating the new language regarding indigent defense funding. Onto page fifty-one, we've updated the language about the community partnership program to reflect our request for legislation. Page fifty-two, under juvenile crime, the data about juvenile crime has been updated.
Just a quick question on the, again, the change to state law to allow the parent or guardian to provide consent. Is is that another A W C priority still, or are other cities similarly pushing that?
Um, I have heard of other cities that have been requesting that, but I it is not an A W C priority.
We tried, you know, galvanize a bunch of support for various issues, including that one a couple of years ago. Okay.
On page fifty-four, um we've updated the statement on traffic enforcement cameras and included license plate readers. Uh, we do expect there to be legislation um regarding, not not specific to flock cameras, but the policies that um establish the or uh dictate the records associated with lock cameras.
I wasn't sure what I what you meant by the second sentence in that change on fifty-four, where it says both tools should be treated similarly in terms of Public Record Act regulations.
I think that's referring to both tools, meaning both traffic enforcement cameras and license plate reader cameras. Yes.
So, but what do you mean by that? They should be treated similarly. Another, it's not subject to or subject to?
That if they're that they are, both of them are subject to, and that if there's reductions or exemptions, that they should be uniform.
Similarly, good, got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Bransdeter?
Yeah, and I understand this is an issue that we're going to be a topic during during an executive session today. So I think it's important that we be careful what we ask for. Um, if we're uh you know, with this. And so maybe after we have the executive session, then the question about should license plate cameras be subject to the Public Records Act in the same way that enforcement cameras are where the we actually had a primary store of much data. It is is the same. I I mean, we may not want to say that. But I think that that may be more of an executive session discussion.
Be careful on that, so kind of want to keep a lid on that particular piece, but just, I just want to clarify what the intent was, the language there, but good point.
Yeah, we can put a pin in that and look for direction after you guys have had a discussion on it. On page fifty-five, we've removed the reference to the State Hospital Reentry Program. That was actually passed in two thousand twenty-one, and we did not take it off. It has hung out there for several years. Um, and we've also removed the reference to consolidating traffic-based financial obligations. Um, again, a carryover from several years ago when that was a hot topic. On page fifty-six, um we're suggesting removing the reference to WASPIC's two thousand twenty-five priorities as well as the Community Notification Board request from last year and updating the language on the Clean Building Standard Compliance to acknowledge the legislation that was passed in two thousand twenty-five. Um, and to still ask the legislature to do more on that. The final section is Military Affairs, and the language here has um all been updated to reflect the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership's two thousand twenty-six legislative priorities.
Great.
And those are all the edits.
Questions on the edits as Ms. Helder walk through them? Should say Ms. Helder and Mr. Vargas because he had a hand in this, obviously. Appreciate that. Right, I guess you got a clean bill of health.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Clean bill of health on the agenda, on the agenda, yeah, so. No suggested edits, it sounds like, other than we need to put a pin in some of the discussion pieces.
Great, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Shelley, did you want to get some clarification on December second?
Thank you for the reminder. Um, so I know that we have um floated some dates. December, both December second and December eleventh were being considered to meet with our state legislators. It's looking like December second is going to be um uh the date that works better for the delegation. Um, we so far don't have a lot of legislators that are able to attend. And so um just flagging that and also noting um holding those the meetings with legislators in a smaller setting may result in a better turnout moving forward. Having a more casual discussion as opposed to in a in a public um setting. Um, anyway, so food for thought, and it's something that we could implement on December second or that we could um work on moving forward. I think the question for you all is, um, if you do on December second want to hold it in a smaller group setting, is identifying who on the council wants to um be be part of that meeting with the state legislators.
I'll open it up. The date works for me. I think having a casual, it's a Tuesday night. Yeah. Yeah, so I I think casual is better. When you said food for thought, having food at dinnertime for them is helpful for them to feel more at ease and chat about things. Mr. Bransdeter?
Yeah, it's an interesting idea that 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 implies that the uh delegation members don't necessarily want to have those sessions as in public meetings.
I I hope that's not how it comes across because none none of them have indicated that to me. My observation is coming from having worked with many cities and many different legislators um and observing how the conversations evolve when it's in a larger group versus when it's three to four people. Um, it, there's there's just able to be more conversation in smaller settings.
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, I think that we have traditionally engaged in having at least one or two public meetings if it takes to get a majority of the delegation to come to do that in a public meeting of where our discussions with them are transparently available to the public. And I think that that has been a um I think that's something that has served served the community well to be able to to go and do that and to be able to go and do that. And while it may leave Ms. Helder and her henchpeople, um, the uh sometimes doing some damage control and interpreting what what they heard, it goes on. But I'm I'm willing to consider it, but I think this maybe is not the right year to do that. I think um, you know, it's a it we're we're going into a short session and we're going to do that. And we're 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 changing over. And it's a year of when there are going to be uh uh um local municipal elections so that uh it may be that December second is a good day or a December. And while I think all of us will continue to have in one-on-one interactions with members of the legislature that we can can go through and do that. But it serves as much to inform the legislators about our policy manual for their jurisdiction than um as as well as to inform the public about what we're what what we're asking for. So I so I sort of like that. The opposite has worked well for us with the county, where we've just sort of taken the county policy manual and we've just met with the District Six uh council members. So 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 both can work. I think I would uh just not want to make the change this year. But perhaps look at it as whether we want to make that change going into a a long session a year from now. Uh, depending what our collective thoughts are and what the uh um makeup of the delegation is a year from now.
Any other thoughts? My only thought is taking Shelley's lead. To me, it's always been an education exercise. You get them together and educate them about what our priorities are as opposed to having, I don't want to call it a dog and pony show, but a public dog and pony show. Um, but on to, you know, we're here to get the recommendation and figure out the best course of action. We point as well taken to have it for the benefit of the public, but I think the education piece is of more benefit to the public if it's done as thoroughly as it can be with more members.
And it truly is up to you all. I mean, this is your legislative agenda. And so and it it's a conversation for you to have with your state legislators. Um, the format of sitting around the table and and talking in a public setting has worked in the past. Um, my suggestion or, you know, idea for you to consider this evening, I I want to make sure, because Councilmember Bransdeter was reading between lines that didn't exist. Um, it's not anything that's coming from the state legislators. And this purely my thought of um an opportunity to kind of do things differently. Um, but really, it is up to you all. And I think in cities where it's worked well to have a smaller group settings, there's been frankly, only one or two council members that truly care about state legislative issues. So when you have a council that is full of folks that are really engaged uh at state issues and are really passionate about the topics, it makes sense. It makes sense to have everyone at the table.
Well, I guess the first question is December second, kind of where we're looking?
Yes, uh, December second is the date that works best.
Okay, well, if it works for all of us, then I guess you got a quorum, so it will be a public meeting.
Okay, great. I'll see you then, if not before.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas, I take it you're taking us through the county piece of the policy manual?
That is correct, starting on page sixty-three, and I'll go ahead and cover the substantive changes again. So, starting on page sixty-eight proper of your packet, uh, we have updates um to the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners items since the city is a founding member and we are supportive of their new two thousand twenty-six legislative agenda for the state. We went ahead and signaled support there. Moving on to the next page, under utility connections in support of middle housing types. We have a similar item in the state manual. Um, but what we added here is that the city also supports a coordinated use of commerce connecting housing to infrastructure program or CHIP, uh, which could be used in conjunction with multiple local governments to bring infrastructure to affordable housing sites. That's new addition there.
Yep, Mr. Pearson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there, you know, is there any thought to some of this affordable housing? Like eh to, I guess, claw back some of the energy code stuff that's been put in place instead of making, you know, all of the affordable housing meet all the current energy code? Is there like, it just seems like the obvious one is to like, if you want to reduce construction costs, then claw back, you know, take us back to two thousand sixteen energy code, and there you go. Like, that makes a huge amount of progress, and you don't even have to provide funding, you just claw back regulations. I mean, if we could ask and advocate for something like that for affordable housing, that would go way further than any, you know, of these programs and things that are going in. And and I I don't know, you know, why no one advocates for that, but that would be what I'd be asking for.
Not a bad idea at all. Thank you. Maybe review legislation that impacts the cost of construction of housing, including and unlimited two.
At the state level, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, and that's separate from the clean building?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Have we also, I mean, I missed it, but the sewer connection fees for ADUs, do we talk about that in here?
Yep, yep, that's still under utility connection, yep, the item we're looking at. So that's really starting a dialogue with the county. You know, specifically Pierce County Sewer about looking at those for ADU connections to see if there's, you know, any way that we could reduce those to incentivize more ADUs. The city's still supportive of that dialogue, yep.
Okay.
Moving on to page seventy-two. This is all about the Lakewood libraries here. More so to, just to give an update here, really, we kept, you know, the narrative language about how we got to where we are in terms of the old Tensler Library and also the analysis that shows that it would be cost prohibitive for the city to start its own library. But we do still keep this item about interim public park, which was actually in addition from last year. So the city supports entering into an interlocal agreement with the Pierce County Library System to create and maintain interim park at that old downtown library site. So just a conversation starter, if you would like to keep that. And an update as well, I went ahead and looked at the Board of Trustees packet. And as of September tenth, there was a review of a Lakewood property feasibility study report. The board commissioned essentially this study from an architect company. There are no building designs, but it really just looked at site parameters at the old Tensler site. And so some of the constraints they looked at was zoning, parking. They referenced perhaps a fifteen thousand to thirty thousand square feet facility at that old site. Cost estimates were based on comparative libraries and final concepts are due to the board in early October to be implemented into the PCLS's Comprehensive Capital Plan. So there is movement in the board looking at that old site to perhaps cite a library there again.
So just wanted to- Do you want to add a sentence in? The city would support the Board of Trustees in its review and planning processes for the construction of a new library at the old Tensler site, something to that effect?
Sure, sure.
That's where they're headed.
Yep, yep, seems like it. So, okay, that could be added.
Mr. Bransdeter?
The main body there.
Yeah, and, you know, given this is a policy manual, but it's the county policy manual and the library is a is a county entity, okay, not a
Yep.
county government entity, but it is a Pierce County entity. But I really think we don't really need the Lakewood Library Analysis Paragraph in here. I know it's, we, 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 we've said we want to work with them to address the needs. We, we, we've talked, we, we've talked about the needs and it's with the library district that we need to have the discussions about an interim park. And so that, that big paragraph in the middle of that, I don't think adds to the conversation and I would take it out of the manual.
Yeah. Makes sense to me. Anybody else?
Moving on to the next page, got rid of the Tensler log items since that project is complete and we rehomed it at Fort Silicon Park. Moving on to community health and resilience, went ahead and consolidated chronically homeless shelter item further in the manual. Looking at discretionary spending of public health resources. This is to just clean up some language and to say that the city still supports countywide efforts in addressing public health issues with their sort of behavioral tax that they passed, so. And also including that the city supports any more discretionary funding opportunities for Lakewood to address public health issues here.
Okay.
And for opioid settlement funds, just cleaning up language there. And essentially keeping the punchline of the city still support its own full discretion over those monies, so. Moving on.
Crime.
Let's see, juvenile crime has been updated. Page seventy-seven. So, good news, the video arraignment has been removed because as of July twenty twenty-five, Pierce County Jail is offering video arraignment now, so saves them city time and resources on transportation, so. Went ahead and removed that. Onward to transportation and infrastructure, removed again the Crowver Creek floodplain item. On the next page, added support, regional support for the I-5 Niskuale River Delta Project when that comes around. It's definitely a regional effort there. Removed two items, haven't seen much action related to flood control zone district and then the Pierce County Transportation Coordinating Committee. As for Pierce County Sewer Utility.
Quick question for Mr. Bransdeter.
Mr. Mayor, if Mr. Vargas wants to continue, I'd just like to come back to the the, the, the juvenile justice question when he's, when he's finishes up.
Let's, let's go ahead and take that one, yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Bransdeter on that.
Okay, you know, requesting the county to support the state amendment law regarding parental consent, okay, I mean, that, that, that's a strong ask, that's consistent with what we've got in the state policy manual. However, I, it, it occurs to me that we beat around the bush on the issue of asking the county to conduct a review of the philosophy at Raymond Hall. I mean, we talk about, well, the, the, the philosophy asserts that, but to do that and, and, and I, you know, think that, that, that maybe if we wanted to word it more strongly, we could ask that the county conduct that review of their philosophy in, in light of the fact that it doesn't always work. Okay, and that it needs to be more case by case based than it is currently, because right now there's a default particularly for first or second time offenders of just send them back to do that. You know, and I'm sure exactly how I would word that to, to, to do that, because that's, that's really a recommendation to the court. Because the court would, 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 would look to, to, to need to do that. There is one other activity related to Raymond Hall. It's also that I think maybe we would want to state our support of, and that is the county's effort to modernize the facility at Raymond Hall to make it more effective in terms of influencing youth. I think, I think that the, 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 the Pierce County has indicated that they're willing to spend some money and they've created a a task force and advisory thing that includes at least one member from Lakewood on it to be able to go and do that. And I would kind of like to word saying that, that we're in support of that process to, to, to make Raymond Hall a more effective place to do that, and then those, those two things. But I don't have any words to suggest here tonight to do that, other than those are two thoughts we may want to voice.
I think you'd probably come up with a sentence or two on that, supporting language for the
I think it's nice that we support the rebuilding or something of Raymond Hall. I don't know the other ones, if we're not even what we already have in here of changing the state law to allow parents to tell their kids to maybe violate their own Fifth Amendment rights or something. I don't think that has any traction, to be honest, and we can leave it in there. A question telling the court, they're, they're very proud of their programs, whether or not they always work. And I, you know, when they come up for their budget thing this week, I urge you to watch it and see if there's any change in their philosophy and maybe we can adjust to that, but up till now, they've been I mean, one of their points of pride is having less residents at Raymond Hall on a daily basis than more. So, does that? Yeah, we might not support that, we're, we're just going to say, well, if they deserve to be there, be there, but for the better part of two decades now, the court has been extremely serious and very proud of the fact that they've gone down from average daily population of over a hundred to down to twenty or thirty or whatever it is.
It's because the facility is decrepit.
It's a decrepit facility, it's a, yeah, it's not good, it's not good. Yeah, you gotta do something, and I think that the new executive is really going to take that on. Because it's a serious problem. I mean, it's just old. And part, some parts are older than other. Well, there's a good article in the paper about, yeah, a part, some parts go back to the fifties or sixties or something, so.
Okay, so the consensus I'm hearing is to perhaps add in some language supporting the modernization of the facility, that, you know, Lakewood participating on the task force, and that's about it. All right.
Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we kind of wrapped up the transportation infrastructure. I just wanted to see would it be appropriate to add anything here about the outfall situation at American Lake and at all as far as, you know, planning on managing that or studies to, you know, with what to do there. It's, I, it sounds like we got some guidance from the county that they're not going to do anything anymore, and so how do, you know, where does that leave us? Are we now, you know, if we want something to change, so our docks aren't sitting on the bottom of the lake, is that on us to put together a study and go, you know, maintain this now, you know, I, I guess I, I feel like them saying they're not going to do anything just kind of leaves us in a weird spot, so I how does that affect, how does that impact our lake levels for our residents and for, you know, the environment and stuff here, so? Don't know if it's appropriate to put here or something else, but just thought I'd ask.
And that could certainly be a discussion point if that's your consensus here.
That's one thing. Sure.
Okay, I can present some language and, you know, as this comes forth, council, next week, yeah, can review that, so. And I guess that is asking the county to revisit that essentially? Since they did give an answer.
Yes, I, I think what we wanted to do is encourage the county to work with property owners in the lake to resolve that, that issue.
On the weird issue? Well, I talked to Mr. Russell during council comments, but there's a movement by some of the lake members to actually pursue the establishment of a formalized lake district like Stillicum has, where they assess themselves, they monitor treatment, they do their thing. Whether that's viable or not on a larger lake like that, I don't know. But that's what some neighbors want to do, so we may hear more about that from staff later. But it's not a legislative policy ask with the county per se, it would be something that we would work with the neighborhood on. I think that's correct, maybe, yeah. Whatever floats their
Yeah, um. Yeah, honestly, I don't think it'd be a legislative thing on the county. They've kind of stated where they're going to be in terms of where that lands. I, I just, I can't answer that question at this point. You know, I know people want answers tomorrow, but this is a longstanding issue with a lot of variables. Probably a lot of underlying jurisdictions that, you know, just from any type of previous issue with waterways, there's always multiple layers involved in it and regulation of it, so.
Have a district where they assess linear fee charges, including the state, the beds, the city. There's already some assessment, I think, and it's a multi-headed Hydra.
So i- in terms of, you know, what that end resolution may or may not be, it's just too early for, for me, I mean, obviously those discussions are in a
The policy made counting?
At this point, I, I don't know what that would look like even.
Yeah. What our ask would be.
Yeah.
And it could be such
Huge, yeah. Go ahead, yep.
Sure. I think on that note, perhaps when we set up a joint meeting with the county council member, that could be a discussion point rather than, you know, legislator.
Yep.
Got it. Let's see here, substantive changes. Let's skip to page eighty-one here. That there has been some pretty big changes when it comes to our regional climate change efforts. The city does participate in our Pierce County Alliance for Sustainable Climate Action. We're supportive of that group still, and we're supportive of any regional efforts for climate change, especially since the city is embarking or really more formalizing its natural environment and climate change program here, so. Lots of regional opportunities to collaborate with the county on that. And then moving on to the next page, our regional response to homelessness. This is really just to say that the city supports some more geographic equity when it comes to placing shelters around the region, so. That's what that item speaks to.
We're still not doing on density standards for adult family homes. That was an item several years ago.
Yeah, that's
Not going to happen. That'd be more of a state issue anyway, but yeah.
Yeah, essentially. And that concludes the county manual.
Any questions? I guess not. Well, thank you, Mr. Vargas. We appreciate it. We'll get some updates coming back to us before adoption, right? Okay, so the next three hundred pages worth of items, let's take at least a seven minute break before we dive into this on my three hours of sleep.
Mike is not on, thank you.
And when you say brief, Mr. Mayor, that's three hundred pages, page by page, sir.
Perfect.
All right. I promise I will not do that to everyone. Good evening, everybody. Line by line, we're gonna do that. So tonight is an introductory, uh, kind of presentation. Uh, no formal action is being requested by this body, just an orientation on scope, schedule and key compliance review findings and next steps. So kind of, this is on page, it starts on page, uh, eighty-seven in your packet I believe, all the way down to three hundred and something, that's the slide deck there. So bear with me. Um, again, tonight's agenda, we're gonna go over and update goals, why the update is necessary. An overview, why Title twelve and the, what the Title twelve and the ESM or ener, and, uh, excuse me, energy. Engineering Standards Manual or ESM for short, Regulate. We're also gonna go over scope and schedule, the process and timeline for the updates. The initial compliance review, um, key findings and recommendations, and last but not least, what's coming up later this year in quarter four, but also in quarter one, twenty twenty-six. So kind of overview, um, Title twelve governs public works right away, stormwater and utilities. It's essentially the foundation of the city's infrastructure regulations. The Engineering Standards Manual or ESM, uh, translates those code requirements into technical design and construction standards, so they come together as a way to safeguard public health, safety and welfare. The last full, uh, Title twelve update was concluded in two thousand nine. Um, the ESM was a light update in two thousand twenty-one, so it was very limited focus, so it is ripe with the comprehensive plan being majorly updated last year, as well as changes to federal and state frameworks. It's ripe to kind of realign this code to present day. Over the summer, council approved a contract with Keller Associates to assist in this effort, so this is a consultant assisted effort with the goal to improve consistency, improve, enhance predictability and increase usability for both applicants and the public and staff. So the update structured in kind of five major tasks. Task one was the kickoff, kind of, hey, we got our contract, here's what we need to do. Establish those scopes, goals and, uh, data collection effort. Task two, which is a compliance review, we'll go in that in a little bit shortly, was completed just in August with looking at a comprehensive kind of gap analysis against our adopted standards, but also what the peer jurisdictions, whether that was University Place, Tacoma or surrounding jurisdictions we're doing. Task three, which is draft revisions, we're in process of preparing draft code revisions and ESM updates for review by the planning commission as well as this body coming up. And then last but not least, um, take that review through full legislative review by planning commission and council with quarter four going through planning commission review with a similar briefing, um, held with planning commission on Wednesday, but entering in quarter one of twenty twenty-six, really coming back to this body with a full breadth of those recommendations, but also action. And again, kind of the focus tonight is really to look at the compliance review. Again, this was recently completed. It was intended to be broken up into kind of two phased review. One is a holistic consistency review, so how is, does the code and ESM align with federal and state regulations? The comprehensive plan and peer jurisdictions, I'm already losing one of you, we'll get you back. This is an exciting, exciting topic. And then the second is a technical review, so kind of deep dive into street, stormwater and sewer standards and.
Can't wait.
I know, I, it's gonna be amazing. And through this kind of two-pronged approach, the review identified inconsistencies, kind of missed cross references, but also opportunity for clear integration as we look across the Lakewood municipal code and how this interrelates to public as well as private projects. So kind of the highlights for compliance review for streets right away and traffic. Uh, kind of that independent review found gaps in cross referencing and outdated information, um, in Title twelve as well as the ESM. Kind of recommendations are pretty broad there, cross reference, um, chapters within the title, but also with the ESM. Update our street, uh, template details, sidewalk widths and, um, uh, accessibility standards as well. Improve clarity for multimodal design consistency, whether we're talking about vehicles, bikes or pedestrians. And last but not least, make standards more consistent, complete and easier for staff and applicants to apply. So again, some vague language, how does it apply when I come into an application with the city? On the stormwater side, um, Lakewood relies heavily on underground injection wells, so we have more than seventeen hundred registered with the state and department of ecology here. So part of those recommendations, again, for that compliance review. Um, some of those thoughts are exempt roof runoff infiltration for single family duplex housing. Add design guidance for linear bio retention and rightaways. I know this is thrilling stuff here. Clarify coordination amongst the various zoning titles as it relates to low impact development, how that relates to landscaping requirements and impervious surface limits you see in those zoning codes. Um, these updates are intended to ensure compliance with ecology's, uh, phase two municipal stormwater permit and moderate stormwater practices. And on the sewer front, again, uh, sewer outdated and lacks technical clarity. So some of those recommendations coming out of that compliance review is considerate, instead of ho- housing it in Title twelve. Title thirteen, which is, uh, for public utilities, um, for better organization, ease of use. Add detailed stormwa, uh, excuse me, sewer design standards to the ESM by aligning through Pierce County standards for regional consistency, but Mayor, I think we have a question, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, is there any thought to just not really having much for Lakewood sewer standards and just putting a hyperlink to the Pierce County standards and not having to update it at all and saying, you know, you get your permits through Pierce County, here's the Pierce County standards?
So yes, the intention was to take a look at the Pierce County standards and really what we're looking at is not a full layout that we would do on our own, but more a reference with some specific amendments that may tie to what we need here for in the city, like mandatory connection, things of that nature when we look at it. We're not, there's no reason to rewrite the, the book.
Mr. Moran Center?
Yeah, yes. In that regard, it, uh, it, it, it looks like that in our sewer, in, in the, in the Title twelve, there's really two themes in the sewer piece. One is the sewer standards that goes on, and I noticed that there were notes here that said what we say varies from the Pierce County code to be able to go and do that and align it and what may, maybe those sections would be, as Mr. Pearson noted, just adopting the Pierce County code by reference where that is an issue. But it's important that we keep the standards that relate to availability and moving from septic to that because one, that's what generates the revenue stream that we have to, since we have to pay to put the sewers in ourselves in Pierce County isn't, isn't, doesn't look like they're soon gonna change that to, to be able to go, go and do that. But that, but that would also mean that in addition to making the changes in the manual that you would also have to then bring forward changes to Title twelve or if you're gonna wh- whether you're gonna keep it all in Title twelve or move it all to Title thirteen, or whether you're gonna have the different, the two different aspects of it, one in twelve and one in thirteen, I don't, don't know, but you know, when we get to the next February, if we could resolve that, so that the, uh, you, you know, that, that we're, we're not having members of the public read one thing in ours and another thing in Pierce, in Pierce County and, um, and, and, and make a mistake that just causes them frustration.
So speaking of that council member, one of the things we're looking at is referencing back for design requirements, that would be to Pierce County. Right now, even when we come in with capital projects, we still design the project, but it goes to Pierce County for review and acceptance before we move forward. So we wouldn't look to change any design or standards of that nature. What we would look to change and have the control over is the connections. So like when we look at the mandatory connection, we do a capital project, those availability funds, what the, the possibility for deferral and things around that really are that exist. Those are things that we would control in-house, but when it comes to the design, we would look to go ahead and absorb what Pierce County has. Mainly so that we're not re, well, we talk about recreating the wheel, but if we go ahead and do more than, you know, reference, say, go see Pierce County's design, then we have the opportunity to lose things in between the cracks as Pierce County modifies their manual. We have to then go back and modify our manual. So if we're going to utilize another jurisdiction's utility, in this case sewer, it makes holistic sense to just reference them. And then the other controls that you speak to, we would keep within for like when you must connect, how you connect, what the fees are, things of that nature for availability. Those will remain with Lakewood.
Yeah, yeah, it does seem that in other areas, not necessarily this one, where, where, where there is, uh, requirements in state law, we adopt the state law by reference and we say, and if the state law changes, things change here rather than trying to restate it and then getting into that situation of where we've got to change ours because they changed theirs, but there's a, there's a delay.
That, that was one hundred percent part of what we're looking at, so. Right now, if you were to go into the state standards, they'll have all of your sidewalks that meet ADA and they have standardized requirements. You can go into your F series and pull any of them up, they're readily available. But we also right now have some of our own that exist in terms of like a driveway approach. My question really, when we looked at it was why? Why, uh, there's specifically we could look at for what we have for our, you know, different califications of road and what we need to see. But there's many that we could just adopt by reference that are already accepted, have been through the, the proof in the fire of what exists for ADA, like when we talk about ADA and accept those. So that's part of what we're looking at.
Okay.
Also, this compliance review found a number of different kind of miscellaneous findings, um, and one being numerous conflicts between Title twelve itself, but also our zoning code and the ESM, particularly where development code references don't match engineering standards. So again, asking applicants multiple different standards, so clarifying that. So some recommendations identified thus far, integrate low impact development best practices, improve usability with clearer checklist, plan requirements and design detail sheets and simplify the review process, again, for both staff and applicants would be the goal for that.
Okay.
Chris. Yeah, quick question on the LID. It is permeable pavement or permeable concrete roads allowed for Pierce, or for public roads in Lakewood?
I'd, I'll check on that, but my belief is that no, it is not when I've spoken to what we're looking at. I've seen our HMA standards and what's really called out. Um, the one thing that Lakewood has been when it comes to low impact development is they've not really, but it's not something we've really pushed forward. We tend to use. We tend to use a lot of proprietary filter style systems for water quality that exist. And the other issue that we ran into when we speak to a lot of people is that they don't look at using infiltration as much because it infiltrates so fast. They end up having to retard the rate that it does to go ahead and get. The cation exchange and then the hold times that are needed to really be able to use low impact. So we would have concerns with what we look at because we have public standard set for the private standard as well. There are some specifications around pervious pavement when we use it for heavy truck loading and turn radius when it comes to like garbage trucks, things like that. The longevity of that and what we look at, so.
Yeah, I've, in my day job, I've seen many instances where the, the. If you're having it on a roadway that has not held up well and there's been nothing but issues, it's expensive to maintain, so. I just wouldn't want us to get into a spot where we're pushing that for, you know, as a. Desired outcome versus, you know, providing other ways of treating and doing LID, you know, bioswells or bio retention or whatever, so.
So, so historically, the reason that people typically go to pervious pavement is when they have a very bad infiltration rate. They need the square footage that exists for like a quarter inch an hour to go ahead and meet the design infiltration rate for a property. We don't have that in Lakewood. Things infiltrate so quickly, it's cheaper to go ahead and do a dry sump and put in rock. Then go ahead and do the three separate layers with, you know, undercourse grad, a choker course, and then your pervious pavement. Which requires specialized training to install. It costs way more than standard HMA or asphalt, so people have not used it really here.
In terms of next steps, we are currently preparing draft revisions to both the Titles twelve as well as thirteen. Again, that sewer code I mentioned in the ESM. We'll, once that draft is prepared, we'll need to do our standard legislative things. So environmental review under the State Environmental Policy Act. Before we head into Planning Commission public hearing. As well as this body in quarter one of twenty six. Again, the goal of this effort overall is to bring a cohesive, modernized framework to council for adoption in early next year. We'll coordinate internally across planning, building and legal and our partners at Ecology, but also the Washington State Department of Transportation. I see eyes are still open. We've, we're talking about engineering standards. Happy to answer any other questions we may have, but this will not be the last time this topic is before you.
Well, we're always told not to get into the operational weeds, so I tried not to yesterday as I was digging through three hundred pages, but it's very thorough. Thank you. Mr. Brand Center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you know, and, and I noted, you mentioned that it has been a while since the complete. Title twelve was reviewed to be able to go and do that. And I just had a couple of questions about one of the areas that. Going on and that, that's the. Chapter twelve dash thirteen under Title twelve. And it's. The section on commute trip reduction where we have a commute trip reduction that has been. A program that has been in place since the early two thousand period of time. To be able to go and do that and is made one of the first programs the city initiated to, 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 to do that. And it's. In the last fifteen years, it's been mentioned a couple of times to the council, but the, didn't have anywhere to do that. And I noticed that in the packet today where you had the commute trip reductions over there. The, the comment was did not review. Not on a priority list. And I'm wondering what that means, not on a priority list.
So the reality when we look at it, the design standards is really what we're kind of focused on. The availability for people to come in and know exactly what they need to do, right? Currently, an example would be, there is no. List that says if you do this, then you must do a site development permit. It says this is exempt. So then read the rest of the manual to figure out what is or is doesn't need to be done. So it relies on staff very heavily to go ahead and speak to people to know exactly what they need to do. So the priority of really what we were focusing on, because this was design standards, both the ESM and then twelve. Was to make it very clear what people were going to be able to do and how they could move forward with development.
Okay, well. I would suggest that one that, that. Commute trip reduction is, is actually an environmental climate change strategy, even though it wasn't thought of that when we first. First, first did that. And, and, and the new group that we're forming, that's going to be looking at those issues. And could maybe look at this particular chapter to decide, do we have a program that's actually. Having an impact and making a sense and, and being able to go and do that, not as a part of the, this, this. Year's review is going on, but perhaps to put, looking at that. This program on the list of when that. New committee is formed to, to, to be able to, to, to do that. Just to see whether it's impactful because it has a lot of administrative requirements on employers. Administrative requirements on the city, but. The standard merely seems to be not actually get results, but to make good faith efforts. Is the way that, that it's word. And, and, and the question is whether all that administration is worth it. But that's something that I think if in part of our environmental. Group in our, in our effort that we're going to be looking at over the next. Couple of years, okay, if that, that group could look at this plan to see. If it's really making a difference.
Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Tiffany Spear, Planning Division Manager. Just a reminder that in your two thousand and twenty five comprehensive plan amendment cycle, you actually did adopt a new commute trap reduction plan. It's dated twenty five to twenty nine, and it was done in coordination with Pierce County. And a number of other jurisdictions and answered state law requirements.
Right.
So you do have a, a current and updated CTR program in place. Not to say that this can't be talked about in other ways, but it is up to snuff, if you will, with what's currently required.
Yep, on the planning side. Great. Anything else?
I believe that was done in less than fifteen minutes.
Yeah, it was. No, I, I just wanted to compliment you folks and the consultant because it is a big lift to go through that. Line by line and to make sure things are consistent throughout. So probably a good idea to hire the consultant to have the time to do it. It is a lot. It is a lot. Yeah, thanks. Okay. Next, Miss Spear, you're here. As we say, our spear of influence for the review of the two thousand and twenty six Lakewood Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendment Docket, which again is also quite thorough. It's a lot of state law changes we got to grapple with, right?
I think you're getting kind of punchy, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
I'm on two hours of sleep here, so, yeah.
This will also be very brief for you this evening because this is the introduction of the docket. You're scheduled next week to have a public hearing and then once the docket is adopted by yourselves on. November third, it will go back into the pot, if you will, for mixing and development and next spring it'll go back to substantive review by the Planning Commission and then back to you. Following that for actual adoption of changes. But we're in the process now of identifying the potential amendments and what we did during the month of July of two thousand and twenty five. Was say, general public and anybody else, if you have either a land use rezone request or actually any language. In the comprehensive plan policies that you would like to amend, this is your chance to submit that. We did receive two private applications for rezones and they're included in the docket for you that was recommended by Planning Commission. When they completed their work on October first. I will say that there is the potential that some of these will actually come off the list between now and next spring because. We're waiting to see with State Department of Commerce guidance, when they're going to get that out to us. Rather than getting too far ahead of what they might provide as guidance. We could move ahead, but then we might stumble a little bit if they come across with something that. Not necessarily better, but different. So we're going to just wait and see a little bit longer when they get their recommendations and guidance documents out. Which means some of this may move into the next year's cycle, but for now we've got this list. So there's a total of twenty two. Twelve of them are, as the mayor just mentioned, directly related to recent state law change. And so these are all basically reviewing for consistency with these various bills. And not to say that we don't already have language that might satisfy them because there may be. Particularly with the changes that the city has adopted in its twenty-four periodic review. But there will be some of these that will require some additional amendment. So all of these are worded in terms of reviewing for consistency with state bills. Everything from lot splitting, which I think Ms. Helder mentioned earlier this evening. To the transit oriented housing bill that we adopted this year, looking at those minimum parking requirements again. Continuing to finish out the siting of childcare centers throughout the city. And then streamlining and clarifying land use permitting workloads. So it's a variety of topics. The second half of the package is a combination of city initiated items as well as the two private rezone applications. So if you jump down to items twenty one and twenty two, those are those rezones. One of which is related actually to a childcare location, number twenty two. That is down in the Tillicum area and. Things have moved forward with that specific project to the point where this way one may be pulled by the applicant. But as of now, we're including it in the package. And then the other one is a request to rezone something from commercial two to neighborhood commercial two, and so we would review that, assuming you included it in the docket list. But jumping back up, it's again a variety. You see simple scrivener areas regarding. For instance, the reference of Pierce Transit incorrectly in some areas of the county, of our comprehensive plans, excuse me. Looking again at things like ADU designs and whether or not the council would want to consider. Adopting pre-approved plans to expedite approval. And then you have a policy question in front of you in number seventeen regarding. Does the city want to look at maybe allowing food trucks to locate in a particular part of the city, either semi-permanently or permanently? And do you want to allow more than one in a particular area? There's some places in Washington as well as Oregon and other place, other states where they're starting to create kind of food truck hubs. And they're turning into social areas, kind of along the same lines as the discussion you're having right now with alcohol production and sales uses. There's also some updates to the rental housing safety program regulations. Looking at all of the parks zones, this last comp plan cycle, you rezoned two parks to make sure they were consistent with what was anticipated on those parcels. Just trying to clean that up again because there's a few more. I wouldn't call them anything other than a hiccup maybe in zoning over time for the parks. So as it stands, the schedule, next Monday night would be your hearing on this docket. The third would be when you might approve, assuming you're ready to set the docket forward. And then would come the time where it's handled internally to actually draft language and do that. State Environmental Policy Act review. And then the Planning Commission would pick this up next spring and then it would come back to you for final action next spring and summer. And that is where I will stop unless you have questions, Mr. Mayor or members of council.
Any questions, Mr. Brand Center?
I certainly have no questions for Ms. Spear, however, I. Do have one item that I'd like to add to the docket and I guess you, I could do it on November third with an amendment to what comes before us that day. But I wanted to explain what I am, what I am thinking and see if the council would be willing to add that on to the docket this time. And there's a, it, it has to do with. Land use policy, the LU ten. And it specifically, this is the, the policy that talks about how we deal with transitioning non-conforming uses. Out of the area, and this is an area that we've done. Poorly, we, we inherited a lot of non-conforming uses and somehow we've gone through. And the way that LU ten is formatted, it sets, it's set up with. Three particular reasons why a, 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 a non-conforming use would have to sunset and, and, and no longer continue. And I don't have any problem with those criterias, but then there's a fourth strategy that LU ten dash four. That essentially. Allows for disregarding the first three. And that has frequently been the case. We have had a lot of things because we've had things where people come and say, well, if you don't let me reestablish the use or do that. Well, then there'll just be nothing there and in the short term, that's having something there is better than nothing. And so this particular strategy in the comp plan is allowed for. For instance, a building that's had a substantial fire that would have. No longer do that, but it's not in a, but it's in an air corridor zone, it can't be, it shouldn't be allowed to rebuild, but we've. Let them rebuild it and we've, we've had some other things like that. And LU ten dash four, I think it's just worded poorly. Okay, that, that, the. In other words, if compliance would prohibit the productive use of the property, that's a very short-term statement. I mean, the, the idea is if, 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 if the use went away, it may be vacant until.
This deals with that reasonable use exception requirement as well.
Allowed. And then if activities support important community functions, if the activities support important community functions. We should probably have changed them to be conforming uses to be able to go into it. So I would like to put this on the docket for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation about how this could be reworded. Or whether this strategy could just be deleted.
And deleted. As far as I understand it, that's a reasonable use exception under the state law. You gotta have somewhere in your comprehensive plan. Yeah.
Right, right, right. It, it, it's just worded, it's just worded poorly in terms of interpretation. So I'd just like to see. You know, you know, I, I have no problem with it being reworded with something that's a bit more specific in terms of criteria. Rather than as general as it, as it were. And, you know, you know, and I then look forward to what the Planning Commission would, would come up with in regards to that. To be able to do that, because this is an area that we. We've, we've got to start to get some momentum on to be able to, to go and do instead of just saying. We'll live for fifty or sixty years with the non-conforming users that we inherited from the county and will. Allow them to be rehabbed to the point where they'll last even longer. So I, I, I guess the, but the, the question would be, Miss Spear, is. Can this be added to the docket in advance of the public hearing? Or do I have to wait till November third to, to make a motion to amend the docket to add review of this particular strategy?
No, we can certainly add it to what will be in front of you next week for a public hearing. It can be another potential docket item that people could testify on. And then come the third, when you're taking action, council can decide to keep it in or take it back out, whichever.
Okay, so on, on the third, you could put it so that it's on the agenda bill.
We could.
And, and an amendment would have to be made to take it off.
Yeah, what I'm suggesting is that if you wanted to have it considered in part of the public hearing, which is a week from now, we could also actually include it for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
If that's what you'd like.
If, 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 if that's okay.
It's not up to me. What do you guys think? If you want to add it, we can add it. I'm fine with that. I just can't think off the top of my head what examples we're trying to fix with it.
I, I think there's probably some history to this language related to. When the city incorporated and where things have been located or where things were located at the time. And particularly with the air corridor zone, because that's such a unique situation. Where you have, whether it's homes or businesses that were there for a long time. And then there was, you know, this very. Well-intentioned and safety-based decision to say X, Y and Z is non-conforming. But you have people living there or businesses that have been there. And so I, I think that's where some of this came from. There may be other examples in the city.
So we can set it on there, have a discussion on it, sure. Doesn't sound like there's opposition, so we might as well add it, make it number thirty. Twenty-three, I guess. Very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Pearson, before you go.
Just, um, on, on the two thousand and twenty-six dash seventeen, the permanent replacement of food trucks. I, I would. I would, I guess, I think it would be a lot bigger benefit to have an established kind of permanent location for multiple food cars joined together rather than trying to allow permanent locations scattered about the town. I think that the city, if we could somehow focus that into a singular place, I think it'd go a lot farther in establishing kind of like a little, you know, whatever, food truck mall, plaza, whatever it is. Those have been really successful in other places. And if we could encourage that, I think that, you know, you'd probably see a lot more people visiting food trucks rather than, you know, oh, well, you know, someone I'm with wants to go here, but I don't really want to go to that food truck. But if we go here, there's ten different food trucks to choose from, and we can all, you know. Yeah, so I've been to a handful that have really been quite nice to visit and yeah, you get a lot of different, you know, it's almost like going to the farmer's market. You know, it's like, yeah, you can pick whatever you want, right? So.
Thanks. Sounds good. And then there's the, have you guys seen some of these pop-up food carts in the evening, like late evenings?
Yeah.
Not even permitted or, so I don't know. Yeah, it does smell good, but. Yeah, that's an interesting one. Yeah, and they just show up. Okay, those items tentatively scheduled for the October twenty city council meeting. Remember, it's our third Monday. So we have the hybrid meeting starting at six. But you see all the items for review and discussion. And so now we'll turn to reports by the city manager, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, just a few items. And actually, we addressed one of them with identifying December second. Had the state legislator photo opportunity at American Lake Park today. Coming up this week, a Tillicum Neighborhood Meeting tomorrow. On the sixteenth, the PSRC Regional Transportation Planning. Also on the sixteenth, Clover Creek Neighborhood Meeting. And on the seventeenth, the inaugural Joint Services Ball. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions on the agenda of opportunities to meet with the public? I think I'm going to be at the HOA meeting tomorrow night in Tillicum, so. Yeah, Pierce Transit is presenting there because they had comments and concerns about transportation. So they're making an effort to go out tomorrow night to meet with them. Yep. That sometimes is what happens, yes. Another day. So if we can turn to perfect. Well, why don't we start with you, Mr. Boki for council comments, so.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Man, you look very nice tonight.
Thank you.
In a rugged sort of, sort of way. Pacific Northwest fall style, and we appreciate that, really. I went to Truck and Tractor Day. And it leaves a smile on my face, all those little kids just having a great time. And parents and grandparents trying to chase them. I felt really bad for this one grandparent chasing this one little girl, very cute little girl. I see at one, at one point in time, she's running somewhere towards the school bus, I think. And then a little later, running towards the pumpkin patch and grandma's flying after I go, that girl needs to be in cross-country. But it's a wonderful event. Kudos to our, to our staff again for just, just putting on a great event. And it's really heartwarming. And it was a beautiful fall day. It rained a little bit, but gorgeous fall day. And a lot of our partners were there. The school district had a nice presence. And really, really looking forward to that. It looks like we got Tillicum tomorrow night. Planning Commission, and they're going to start on that. I just looked at their agenda. They are going to work on the distillery thing, or they're going to have a discussion around that, it looks like. Or some kind of presentation. And then, Mr. Mayor, it looks like we have Pierce County Regional Council, but there's nothing posted. So, yeah, so I don't, I don't know what that is going on there. So it's exciting next four or five, four or five days.
Lovely.
And we're in the middle of budget at the county, so keep you abreast. It's exciting, yes. Thanks. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I also went to Truck and Tractor Day and observed the same level of hyperactivity. That was there and what was going on. And also, you know, the very active involvement of the youth council volunteers had multiple spots in the venue to do that. And it's, it's something to do. I think, I think some of the kids were more interested in the small trucks and the piles of dirt than they were in the big trucks that were that had adults guarding them. That I, 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 I plan to attend the Tillicum Neighborhood Association on Tuesday and the Clover Creek Neighborhood Association on Thursday. And I have the South Sound nine-one-one board on Wednesday morning.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also swung by Truck and Tractor Day briefly after soccer. I was, yeah, it's, as Mr. Branstadter, or Mr. Boki said, it's always good to see the kids out, you know, running around and seeing what kind of dreams they're going to follow with being a firefighter or a police officer or whatever else they want to do, so. Had the photo opportunity at American Lake Park this morning with our legislative folks there. And it was great to be able to show off the improvements and what, you know, the funding was spent on. And so they really thought that the improvements were nice. And we kind of talked about, had a little presentation of the, you know, what it was from and to. And then also just kind of emphasized like how heavily that park is used during the summertime. I mean, it is, there's hundreds and hundreds of people there. So they were really impressed with, with the use that the park gets out of it. And being able to provide ADA accessibility down to the water, that was another kind of key topic that was hit on there, so.
Great.
Yep, that was a good thing this morning. And then I have PSRC this Thursday, so we'll see what comes from that.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and then I had one question for city manager. If, if you could get me on a Monday of meetings, just a phone call to kind of go over a few of the kind of key topics on the agenda or anything that might come up, I think that would help. That's, that was a past practice that I personally thought worked well and was helpful for me. So I don't know if others share any. No, for our meetings here. Just a quick little update on Monday.
Yeah, I'm happy to include anyone that wants it, so we'll just connect on the time.
Anytime, yeah, anytime for me. Oh, you have one? Okay, yeah. Lunchtime-ish, anytime, yeah. Thank you.
Or in the morning, sure. Very good. Thank you.
I just wanted to brag, thank you. So I, so I agree that I was at the photo opportunity with our senators today. And I think that it was, it was really amazing to hear about what the improvements were there. And it's the little things like, hey, we have a bunch more trash cans here now for you. But we did cover them really nicely. You know, there's a nice, some art that was commissioned from the Arts Commission, obviously, to enclose them a little bit. And the bathrooms are now more accessible to the people that are at the boat launch and the people that are, you know, down at the lake. So I just think that the improvements there are going to be, well, they are phenomenal. I think that they're a great improvement. And Councilmember Pearson is right, that place is just so busy, especially when it's hot. So that was a really good opportunity to see everybody today and to learn a little bit more. I didn't make it to Truck and Tractor Day, but I heard it was fabulous. I was at a swim meet, so it was warm, at least. And I'm going to try to make it to the Clover Creek Neighborhood Meeting. I am not sure if my schedule will allow, but it is on my calendar.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did make the Truck and Tractor Day, and I think I had more fun than my granddaughter's did.
Nice.
I loved the hayride. It was a lot of fun. The ribbon cutting at Clover Park Truck and River College, I think that was very nice. They unveiled a mural that the students had created. And they have opened up a peer mentor center where anybody that have any problems or any concerns or don't know where to start or whatever, there's someone there to direct them. And that was something apparently that was missing. I did attend the chamber luncheon. There was an attorney there that was very, talked a lot about some of the stuff that we do here in our city. More or less, it was, for me, it was more of a review. So that was, but it was very good. And I will be attending the Joint Service Ball on Friday.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very nice. Well, it was a busy week. I unfortunately was not able to attend Truck and Tractor Day. I went to, as I mentioned last time, Parents Weekend at Boise State University. So I think it was interesting. I always love going to different communities and taking pictures of some of their public spaces just to see how they utilize space for families and kids and teens. So I've got some photos and passed along a, just a very brief concept drawing to Mr. Russell to forward to you for what could be some placemaking, site planning for the downtown park. Again, just to get our creative juices flowing at some point when it becomes timely to do so. I think we've got it coming up in a study session sometime in the next, I don't know, do we, in the month or so?
Well, so a lot's going to lead off. So next week, we're going to discuss the budget session, the biennium. I'd mentioned previously in talking about engagement for downtown facility of any kind to have much more public engagement. That'll kind of be dependent upon where that discussion ends up. You know, a lot of it was related to Edgewater Park. And really, and we've talked about this before, you know, a lot of the funds that would otherwise go to parks and facilities, improvements are being diverted towards defense costs and to those things. That's just the reality of the situation we are. You know, we've talked previously about that, one tenth, one cent sales tax, using it for those defense costs that are escalating it. That would free up those Edgewater Park improvements, more of a community engagement process for the downtown facility. So, yeah, a lot of those talks can stem from the twentieth. The one thing we are looking at is establishing a draft RFP for that downtown process to bring back to council. Still, I'd love to do it this fall into the early, part two thousand twenty-five to, it's okay, is this the right concept for the request for proposal for the community engagement process to study these different things and components? So, yeah, ideally, that will still be before council this calendar year to go forward with that.
Sounds good. Well, it was a lovely opportunity, good weather, good open spaces. And the other beautiful thing, the grocery stores, it wasn't anything locked up anywhere. It was kind of refreshing and unbelievable. It's like, wow, you don't lock away your soap? No, you can actually walk up and buy what you need. So anyway, I will attend the Tillicum Neighborhood Association meeting tomorrow night with Pierce Transit representatives there to talk a little bit about transit and other city things. And it should be a good meeting. There are good folks out there. So that is all I have for tonight. We do have an executive session. So council will recess into executive session for about fifteen minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten sub one sub I to discuss with our legal counsel representing the city litigation or potential litigation to which the agency governing body remember acting in an official capacity is or likely to become a party. Knowledge of the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. So we will not take any action, obviously, and will come back out from executive session. And we will adjourn this meeting at that time. So right now, we'll be in recess for the executive session.